I had to buy a new cellphone in order. With charges.
Okay, can I have your attention here, please? We're gonna call to order this meeting, the August 28th meeting of the Hubbard County Planning Commission Board of Adjustment, and I'm gonna start by reading the meeting procedure, and then we'll get on to the business at hand. So, bear with me while I read through this. All persons in attendance at Planning Commission Board of Adjustment meetings are expected to comply with the following meeting procedure. Thank you in advance for helping make this a manageable meeting. Copies of agenda item materials are available for public viewing on the table located at the back of the meeting room. These materials are not to leave the table so that others in attendance may also view them. Please turn phones to vibrate or off during the meeting and conduct any sidebar conversations outside of the meeting room. Got somebody out of order already. Interruption or other interference with the orderly conduct of the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment meeting will not be allowed. Defamatory or abusive remarks are always out of order. Disruptive persons will be removed from the meeting. The chair may terminate a speaker's privilege of address if after being called to order the speaker persists in improper conduct or remarks. Written material concerning agenda items must be submitted to the Environmental Service Department by 3:30 PM on the Wednesday immediately prior to the meeting date. Written materials will not be accepted after this deadline or at the meeting because the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment will not have sufficient time to review them prior to the meeting. Such material must state the agenda item for which it is being submitted and the name and address of the submitting party. Planning Commission Business is connected first followed by the Board of Adjustment Business. The chair will call the meeting to order and explain the meeting procedure. The chair will read each item into the record and ask the applicant applicants to come forward to the presenter's table, state his or her, their name and addresses for the record, and explain his or her request. The Planning Commission Board of Adjustment will then discuss the agenda item with the applicant. The chair will then ask for public comment on the agenda item. To facilitate an orderly, efficient meeting, there is a three-minute speaking time limit per speaker, per agenda item unless the chair allows an additional time. The chair may terminate the speaker's privilege of address if after being called to order the speaker persists in improper conduct or remarks. When the chair recognizes a speaker, he or she may approach the audience podium and microphone, state his or her full name and address for the record, and write such on the speaker log, and then share his or her comments. The audience podium microphone must be used by the recognized speaker because the meeting is recorded. A member of the public may not donate his or her speaking time to another speaker. A speaker should state his or her comments and address the issue, not the applicant's. All comments are to be directed toward the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment. Please do not repeat comments already made by previous speakers. The chair reserves the right to ask a group with similar comments to appoint a spokesperson. If written comments have been submitted to the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment, please do not read them aloud during the meeting as they are already part of the record and copies thereof have been given to the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment. After everyone wanting to speak on an agenda item has done so, the chair will close public comment period on the agenda item. No further public comment will be taken after this point. The chair will give the applicant an opportunity to address issues raised during public comment. The Planning Commission Board of Adjustment will then continue its discussion on the agenda item and the chair will entertain a motion on it. The Planning Commission Board of Adjustment may make a motion to pass, deny, or table the item. Once a motion is made and seconded, the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment will develop findings of fact for conditional use permit and variance applications, and then vote on the motion. Once a vote is taken on the agenda item, the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment will move on to the next agenda item. Meetings commence at 6:00 PM and continue until all agenda items have been heard or until 10:00 PM. No new agenda items shall be considered after 9:45. The Planning Commission Board of Adjustment may at its discretion continue an item that is on the floor at 10:00 PM. Any remaining agenda items shall be continued to another date, time, preferably the immediately following Tuesday at 6:00 PM, and no further public notice will be provided for such a meeting continuation. Planning Commission Board of Adjustment through the chair may modify these procedures to a meeting or an agenda item. Okay, so before we move on to approval of minutes, we've got a large crowd here tonight, and I'm gonna ask that if your case is not one of the first three that we get you to move to the hallway so we can eliminate some of this overflow, and then, once we get through the first two, three cases, then there should be room. One of the first ones has got a large crowd with it, so if you're not on the first two or three, please go out to the hallway, then you can come back in. We'll clear out some room for you.
Maybe you'll agree to three things.
Oh, in case you're wondering, the first three cases, the first one will be a conditional use application by the Woodson Property Group. Second is a variance application by Marcus and Amy Landa, and the third would be Timothy and Wendy Olson on a variance application. So, if those aren't any of yours, if you'd consider going to the hallway so we can get a little more room in here, and once it clears out, we'll get you back in here. Okay, so first order of business is the Planning Commission approval of minutes from the July 24th meeting. So, does any of the board here have any comments on the minutes? Are we ready to make a motion?
This is Mike. I make a motion. We accept the minutes.
This is Veronica. I second the motion.
Okay, so we've got a motion by Mike to approve the minutes from that meeting and a second by Veronica. We'll take a vote on that. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy. I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken. I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
This is Mike. I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
This is Veronica. I vote aye.
And this is Mark. I vote aye. So, the agenda or motion is passed, so now we can move on to the Board of Adjust, or excuse me, new business on the Planning Commission. So, we've got a conditional use application, 1-CU-23 by the Woodson Property Group. Do we have representatives here from the Woodson Property Group come forward to the Right here, if you want to take a seat and give us your name, address, and then you can give us an outline of what you're asking for in this application.
All right. Brad Woodward. We are at 24519 Fairwood Lane, Woodson Cabins.
Okay.
Zach Larson. Same address.
Okay, and you want to give me just an idea of what?
Just read the whole thing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, I should have done that. Okay, before you go ahead, I'm gonna read this. This is a conditional use application, 1-CU-23 by Woodson Property Group, the west one-half of Lot 5 and all of Lot 6 through 14, Block 4, Highland Park, Nevis Township on Lake Belthan, a recreational development lake. Parcel is 21.40.02700 and 21.40.04920. Applicant is requesting a conditional use permit per Section 401, Table 1 of the Shoreland Management Ordinance to operate a restaurant use. My apologies. Okay, so now if you just want to give us a brief idea of what you're looking for here?
Well, when we bought the property, this is our second season with the property. There's an existing partial structure on the property, and so we've been looking at what we could possibly make use for that for, to enhance that property. Right now, it's kind of a nice orphan everybody's, when you were out there looking at the property on Thursday, I'm sure you can agree that it's not great looking, and so we'd like to add a structure to it, and one of the things to do on there is we've been thinking about this restaurant application. We kind of thought it would be a nice additional thing for the community, another place to go, potentially a place to boat up to on shore. I mean, I've been to lots of lakes in the past with that opportunity, enjoy that, you know, that option to be able to do that. And if we, you know, it's just one of those things where if we're gonna make an investment in putting a structure up, you know, obviously, we are, we're a small family business, but we, you know, we want to be able to have the opportunity to make some income off of it also, so that's why we're here.
Okay. Any questions by my board here for these folks?
This is, start question with Eric. This condition use permit applies to the restaurant use only? And I know we've, in the past, will put conditions on in the expansion or whatever. Do we have to define a line between it and the resort as to what property goes with this condition use permit versus what goes with the resort?
Not really, Ken. Eric speaking. The two parcel numbers that are listed on the application are what are proposed to be used for the restaurant use. Those are up on the screen, so that would be the 02700 Lake Lot as well as 04920, the back lot. Both of those were what the board, excuse me, the Planning Commission viewed during the lot view.
Okay, and they are covered by the conditional use permit then? Okay.
Okay. Excuse me, this is Tim speaking. So, that riparian part, that whole lot there, what you're saying that's all restaurant use, then these conditions could apply to them cabins that are in that parcel? No?
No.
Just the building that the restaurant would be?
The structure in which the restaurant would be located as well as potentially, if there's outdoor space that's gonna be used, such as for the parking, or they've got outside space with a lakeside deck proposed, if there's additional space outside that the guests might be able to use, that would be able to be addressed through the conditional use permit.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, this is Mark. I guess this is really a question maybe for you, Eric. You had sent us an email the other day showing a couple of violations. I think one is the sauna, and...
Office being used as a cabin?
Yep, okay, number nine. That's right, number nine. Has there been any resolution of those, or are we still at, those are unresolved issues?
Eric speaking. Concerning the sauna, that is something that we brought to the attention of the applicants during the pre-application meeting, giving them an opportunity to bring it into compliance that hasn't been done as of the lot view date, so we'll be sending a letter in the near future concerning that matter. And then, the item concerning the office that's been converted into a dwelling use, that was recently something that the department became aware of, and so I saw that firsthand during the lot view, and then mentioned it to Zach during the lot view, that that would need to cease to be used as a dwelling, and then we will send written correspondence on those two items, like I said, in the near future, once staff get a opportunity to draft that letter.
Okay. Well, this is Mark. Thank you, Eric. This is Mark. Again, I'm gonna redirect those questions to you and just ask what your plans are for those two issues? If you could give me an idea of what you're thinking?
Yeah, I think for us, we'd, of course, would take care of whatever you want us to take care of. We've got some questions associated with that, and, you know, what the violation is, and, you know, what actually needs to be changed. Okay, I don't know, Eric, do you think there's anything you could do to clarify that further? The sauna, well, let's start with the sauna. Sauna needs to be removed, is that correct? Or from that location?
With a sauna, because the resort use is a non-conforming use, Section 701, non-conforming uses in the Shoreland Ordinance governs that, and because that would be a new structure placed on the property that's a part of that use, the ordinance only allows that if a variance is granted to do that. The sauna also does not meet the 100-foot ordinary high-water mark setback, so those would be the two items that it doesn't comply with in the ordinance. As far as the office that has been turned into a dwelling, again, going back to the non-conforming use status of the resort, it's got a dwelling unit density that exceeds what's allowed for the property's size, and so the addition of that, or excuse me, turning that office into another dwelling would further exacerbate that dwelling unit non-conformity, and that would also require a variance for that to be used as a dwelling.
Okay, thank you.
But as part of a condition use permit, we would want to establish conditions that those two non-conformances are in fact corrected before we will allow the condition use permit to occur?
Yes.
We can, even though this is separate from the resort, from a condition use permit, we can in fact request that those two non-conformances be fixed before a formal issue of the condition use permit?
Before the operating permit for the condition use permit could be issued? Yes, that would be a recommended condition.
Okay. I still have other questions regarding that, because it's been used as a dwelling, and just, I know they called it an office prior to us too, but there was somebody living in it, so, and the structure's been there, so I have other questions. I don't think, you know, we don't have to resolve that right now, but I, you know, as we're gonna work through this, I want to understand some of these things a little better.
Sure.
This is Tim. Could you speak into the microphone when you're talking? I couldn't hear what you were saying.
Okay, sorry. Thanks. Anybody else?
Mr. Chair?
Yep, go ahead, Mike.
This is Mike. I've got several questions where I just, I think I need a lot more information. Looking at the different drawings and the write-up of what we have, I'm somewhat concerned with the actual layout and area for the parking, both next to the building and the proposed parking lot across. You know, I can see a 72-foot length in how many spaces you have, and I can approximate what it is in front of the, next to the road there, and it appears to me that there are very, very narrow parking spaces, and I have a concern of if this is realistic, and then the formulas that we've used to make sure we have adequate parking for a 90-seat restaurant with six employees and so many square feet. And I'm not sure I can determine that with this. Also, the drain fields is a concern, I see an existing thing, but I don't, did we have an actual proposal in here that showed dimensions and materials and everything else, the septic application?
Eric, did you have a comment on that?
Just as, in regard to the septic systems, we have a certificate of compliance showing the system servicing the resort cabins is compliant, and we have a design showing how a system to service the restaurant can be installed to the immediate north of the existing drain field for the resort cabins. What we don't have in the application is anything showing confirmation that there are alternative drain field sites for those two systems.
So, I would certainly want to see that, and I guess as far as the dimensions, if I had a drawing that would say the property cross, it shows me 40 feet from the road, some parking spaces, and I don't see the dimension from the beginning of the parking lot going north to the far end, and that whole layout a little bit more concise to me would be extremely helpful. And then, I think my last question that I have at this time is the impervious surface, and right now, the calculation, has that been determined, and what that impervious surface and what percent we're at right now?
Eric speaking. Yes, it has. That was something that was, we discussed with the applicants during the pre-application meeting, as initial review showed that the property was probably really close to that 25% of lot area threshold in the ordinance. The applicants did provide information in the application showing their calculations on impervious surface area. Staff were able to get out to the property last Thursday to verify those measurements, and staff measurements showed that the impervious surface area on the property with the proposed restaurant and its stairways and deck area would come to 29.7% of that riparian lot area, which would exceed the 25%.
Okay, this is Mark again.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah, go ahead, Ken.
When you do the impervious surface calculation, you're including all the resort land, too?
Correct.
Okay, it's not just for that sort of restaurant area, you're taking the whole thing into account? Okay.
Correct.
Mark, again, Eric, if it was, a comment was made to me that if the sauna were removed, that that would reduce by whatever amount the impervious surface, is that an accurate statement, or?
It's not accurate due to the fact the sauna sits on top of platform.
Okay.
And so, the underlying platform would remain impervious once the sauna would be removed.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Tim.
This is Tim speaking. I have a question for the owner. Have you met with any state sanitarians about what you propose for menu, or what your septic would be, like in Greece, or have you met with anybody from the state about your plans about this restaurant?
No. No, we had, we hired Don Umtham to come out and do that design.
Yep.
And that's as much as we've done for septic part of it, so...
Right, so the state sanitarian, he'll have the guidelines for grease traps, and what kind of square footage you'd need for your plumbing and everything inside of that?
Right.
And so, the septic really couldn't have been planned exactly yet without you going through a sanitarian?
Yeah. That was just a discussion with Don a little bit. He kind of, you know, filled me in a little bit on how things kind of work there, but...
That would be with the Department of Health.
Yep, okay, yep.
So, this is Mark again. I think, my opinion right now, looking at your application, I'm inclined to say it's incomplete. There's unresolved issues. One thing I, well, Mike touched on it a little bit, was the drawing that you provided us with showing parking and that type of thing. To me, I think it would maybe benefit you if we had a surveyor provide information more formal with dimensions that, for instance, just looking at what Eric's got pulled up here, if you look at the parking area, there, okay, we've got 40 on the garage and 34. I thought I had read on a note somewhere that the drawing wasn't to scale. I'm just seeing where, I think we would all benefit by seeing something more formal done for that, for this process. It would make me feel better if I could see officially what's going on here. This just seems a little too informal for my, and again, going back to a couple other issues, right now, we've got three unresolved issues that would possibly either require you to change things or a variance. We've got the sauna, cabin number nine, and impervious surface is now coming into question, so either those would have to be handled through a variance, or you'd have to make some changes. So, that's my inclination, is that we have an incomplete application here, and I would be inclined myself, we'll have to see how the board feels about not going forward with this. I'm inclined to ask to table it, if you want to provide us with that information, if you're open to that, that's the way I'm leaning right now. And I think also in discussion, maybe I've got some board members here who might be able to give you some other information they would look for on that application, and one I'm thinking of right now is Ken here, and he might have some ideas for you of other things we're looking for on your application?
Yeah, I agree with you that probably it's incomplete. I think in the staff report, the environmental services raised 13 possible items that should be addressed. I would think an application would specifically propose how they would handle, you know, lighting, noise, the parking. I think also, that maybe doesn't show up there, I'm a little bit uncertain as to the design of your restaurant. Two floors, entrance, restrooms, how much really space do you have, and what would be the occupancy limits, both inside and outside, need to be specified, I think? I think that, so the, an internal design to the structure, that like I say, I know you have restrooms upstairs, downstairs, a bar, where you're gonna do your cooking and stuff, that all takes up space, and then I don't know what's left over. I know you designed, a proposed design for the septic system for 90 people, okay, fine, but I don't know what your capacity limits would be. I had to see, I had a few other things. The alternate drain field, noise, especially any neighbors close to you on the west side, any things, the impervious surface we addressed. And I think, I think that's what I had, in addition to that list that Eric outlined in his staff report, because those are typical conditions we always look at for a situation like that. So, we'd like to, instead of trying to create it here, we'd like you to sort of say, all right, we're planning on seven days a week, we're gonna be open till midnight on the weekend and tendering, I don't know what those numbers are, but you need to propose those things to us the weekend, then address the kinds of concerns that neighbors have, and what's safe and reasonable. So, I think I'm with Mark in the sense that we should probably table this and give you a chance to come back and answer those questions, or propose. And we have to beat it then against other similar kinds of situations that we've had, but I do think it's incomplete at this point. I don't know how the rest of you feel.
Thank you, Ken. Anybody else?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, this is Veronica speaking. I have the similar feelings. During the lot views, typically, we like to see things staked out. We like to see, this is exactly how far our deck is, put a stake in the ground, run a tape across, here's our plan for our parking. Stake each lot out, take some chalk paint, chalk, this is stall number one, this is number two, this is number three, and so on. Same with the back lot, where you're proposing to have more parking, and your septic and stuff. Stake it out, said this is where our septic goes, because while we were there during lot views, it was just like, well, the septic's gonna be that direction, but it wasn't staked out to give us a visual aid. With your parking, the same thing. This is how we're gonna park, this is how the traffic's gonna flow, we expect you to come in this way, go around, make a loop, however, come back out the same entrance. Again, these are some of the criteria that we're looking for. Same with your... Same with your signs, you're going to want signs, so we want to get a little more information about your signage, where you're going to have, because you're, because you do have that lot behind you, you're going to want a sign that says, additional parking, please park back here, stay off the road, that sort of thing, because that's going to be something that your neighbors are concerned about, is parking on that road. You want to keep that, you know, so, those are, we're just giving you input and feedback that we need this information from you before we can move forward. Same with seating, they mentioned to you, you've got a nice plan here, but we need to see a seating chart. How many people, you say you're going to have a maximum occupancy of ninety, but how many of that ninety are going to be inside, how many are going to be outside? Again, you're looking at a whole year time, open twelve months out of the year, is that correct?
Absolutely.
So, yeah, so, read over the list, and have answers for the list, for your, you plan on having your hours of operation, you know, during the summer, we would like to have X number of picnic tables, are they all going to stay on the deck? During the lot views, I asked you what maybe is going to happen with that playground area, because I could see some further use out there, and if that's what it's going to be, then that needs to be known. Otherwise, a condition might be placed on that says, you know, you're going to be strictly to your deck only, you know, not out there. Some of the other things that you need to consider, or talk to us about, or give us more information, is if you're planning on having large events, you know, outside events, outside music, those sort of things. So, we're just, we need a little bit more information from you before we can move forward. I'm sure we still have to go through public comment from everyone, there's going to be, you know, some of that to take place, too, we'll have to go by that, but, but for the most part, you know, there's some potential, definitely some potential here, but we just need to get some things wrapped up. They talked about your impervious surface, some of those things can be changed, you can change your impervious surface by reducing that deck, moving the sauna, and whatever platform it's on, that's going to reduce your impervious surface as well. Or maybe shrinking down that playground area, if that's part of your impervious surface. Shrink that down to help you stay under that twenty-five percent. You can look at options. You can ask Environmental Services Office as well, what's the best way to shrink my impervious surface, you know, whether it's, like I said, the decks, or that, so, those things, too. So, don't, you know, always ask, what's my best option here, so, but, other than that, I don't have any other questions at this time.
So, this is Mark again. This is a question for Eric or anybody. If we do move to table this, Eric, do we still do public comment? Okay, so I think it's going to be time that we're going to open this for public comment. So, if you do have comments, one by one, we'll ask you to come up to the podium, sign in your name and address, state it verbally, and then you can make your comment. I would ask that if you have already submitted, written public comment, which we've received a large amount, that you don't repeat what you submitted in writing, because it's already a matter of record. If we get a sense that you're doing that, I'm probably going to stop you. Secondly, we're going to limit you to three minutes. I've got a timer over here on my, on my left, that's going to call time, because you get three minutes per public comment. So, if you do have public comments, let's start here. Anybody wants to step up to the podium? And again, give us name and address, write it and say it.
I'm Derek Watson. I live directly across the street from where the proposed restaurant is going, which would be next door to the parking lot also. Obviously, I bought the place about a year and a half ago, right, around when these guys did it, I imagine, too. And I respect what you guys are trying to do and all that, but I didn't buy it planning on living across the street from a restaurant. I have a two-year-old son, animals, all that. I worry about the parking, I mean, how many people are going to not want to walk down the hill from next door to me and just end up parking right in front of my house? And also the noise, you know, I have a two-year-old, try to put him to bed early, I don't want people out till ten, eleven, midnight, in the parking lot making noise and all of that, you know, I mean, again, I respect it, it sounds like a cool idea, but it's not something I really want to live across from. But, other than that, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you.
I can have a question. You indicate you're right across the street from them, not across the lake, you meant across the street?
Across the street, yep.
Yeah.
Which would be next door to the parking.
Okay, anybody else for public comment?
Hi, my name's Martha Adelman, and we live eight hundred feet from the proposed Woodson Bar.
Could we write it on the log, too? Thank you, ma'am.
We feel like we are very much a neighborhood on our bay, and I have spoken to an awful lot of people, and I have not found a single person who is for this proposal. I also yesterday talked to Deputy Sheriff Tim Fowler, who said, and I quote, he said, "Your bay has the most safety issues now, more than any other place on the lake." So, he also said he will be speaking with Sheriff Ochs this week, and will voice our concerns, as we will be undoubtedly need more services allocated for DUIs, water safety, parking, and the safety of the people that are on the lake, us, that like to kayak, board, canoe, swim with our children on our docks and our grandchildren. I also feel that the DNR should be consulted, as this is going to cause damage, we already have damage to our shoreline from boats and jet skis coming too close. We have hundred-year-old trees that are there that are being damaged already, and water quality is going to be an issue, wildlife and the effects of garbage in our bay, all these things are major concerns. Just, there's no mistake here, that this proposal is not the old Anchor Inn, where four or five guys went after fishing for a beer. This is a very different thing, that it's going to impact our neighborhood greatly.
Thank you.
Hello, thanks for the opportunity. My name is Al Lundstrom. I am at two oh two three one Fairwood Drive, on the island, middle area. I had a lot of things to cover here, but I'm not. I'm going to focus on primarily what she was talking about, is I need to inform you about the issues that are going on in the bay now. This could be an opportunity to solve that problem. The problem is that the bay is full of boats that are trying to tow in a space that is way too small and way too narrow. So, we have a significant amount of towing boats that are causing all kinds, you know, it's just a small area, they can't get away. So, it's loud noises, big waves, too close to shoreline, and safety issues, of which the Sheriff's Department can provide reports on all the issues that are already there. So, what I'm saying is, this restaurant's not going to cause a problem, there's already a problem. So, the traffic that's going to be generated by that restaurant will add to that problem. So, what I'm proposing is, is an additional condition be added to this, as a no-wake, closed-throttle situation, which the board can approve, an ordinance to do so. We've been wanting this for a long, long, long time, we've been fighting this for nearly twenty years. I've been in the bay for, since nineteen seventy-eight. Full disclosure, I'm a skier, I'm a wakeboarder, and I'm a surfer, and we pull the kids on tubes all the time, so there is a place to do it, this bay is not the place to do that. So, if we were to put that condition on there to create a no-wake, closed-throttle situation, it would make it safer for everyone. There are alternatives on that lake to do these things, that lake is fifteen hundred acres, there are places to do that. I do it every single day that I go out, we pop in the boat, and we go find a safe place away from the fishermen, away from the paddleboarders, away from everybody, and find a safe place to do it. This bay is not the place to do that. So, we're hoping that this is an opportunity, if you choose to move forward with a recommendation to the board, that this condition be a part of it. Ultimately, it's not the best place to put a restaurant, but if you choose to move forward with this, that's one condition. Of course, another condition would be noise, I don't have to go into detail about that, I'm sure you understand how, you know, noise carries on water. We, on this small bay, can stand in the end of our docks and have a conversation with our neighbors across the lake without raising our voice. Put some music in there, or amplified music or anything, and it is going to be a nuisance. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, this is Veronica. May I interrupt for one moment before the next person? Eric, can you please clarify for me before we have more public comment on the DNR and the no-wake zone and so on, as far as those comments will be? Our jurisdiction lies strictly within the shoreline. Anything that has, the gentleman brought up the condition that's been placed, or would like a condition placed on, for a no-wake zone, that is something that their community in their bay needs to talk to the DNR about, not us, is that correct?
No, actually, it would be through the county board, that the county has a surface water use ordinance.
Okay.
That applies to a couple lakes at present, but it would be the board's place to determine whether they felt that surface water use regulations might be needed for this bay, and if they did, they could add that bay on Beltane to that ordinance and develop.
Okay, so that's strictly the Hubbard County Board of Commissioners, not the Planning Commission Board?
Yep.
Okay.
And that would be enforced if it were a regulation that was added to that ordinance through the Sheriff's Department.
Right, so that, okay, so again, though, it's not really pertaining exactly to this application, but they need to bring that to the attention of the Hubbard County Commissioners' Board, for that to be addressed.
Yeah, or if the commission felt strongly enough about that, I suppose there'd be no harm in the commission making a recommendation to the county board along that line.
Correct, that's what we're asking.
Yeah, correct. Not so much a condition on this application, but just a condition in general to...
Just a recommendation that the board consider that.
Yep, okay.
And thank you for clarifying that.
Sure, yep.
And the process has been started, but we're looking for that recommendation at a bare minimum.
I got it, okay. And then the next question for Eric, also with the Hubbard County, Hubbard County in general does not have a noise ordinance, am I correct?
Correct.
So, as far as noise goes, the best interest for our applicants would be to put quiet hours on your application, and then adhere to them, because Hubbard County does not have a noise ordinance. So, you definitely want to keep your neighbors happy with maintaining that quiet hour time. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Veronica. Thank you.
I was just notified about this situation. I had heard rumors about Brad and Jack wanting to build a restaurant. I think there wasn't originally a restaurant there at one time. A lot of people are really concerned. We're in the process right now of getting started replacing that wood bridge that goes out to the island. And it's going to be bigger. I don't know how much headroom boats will be able to get through there, it would be a lot wider. The issue, Hubbard had a resident ask me about a no-wake zone, she contacted the DNR, the DNR sent it back to local, local government body. I told her, as a township, we would put no-wake zone on each side of the new bridge, but we have no enforcement, that's the Sheriff's Department. The only other issue I would have is the parking on the road. We will definitely make the road no-parking, a tow-away zone, and I will be calling a tow truck to tow anything that's parked on the road. The road is not wide enough to have cars parked on each side, people have a tendency to not want to park in a parking lot. So, we will make it a no-parking zone. Other than that, we don't have any real authority over this, it's all in shoreline ordinance, and we don't do zoning in Nevis Township, off of the lake, or off of rivers. So, that's all my comments to put towards the board.
Okay, thank you.
I think that gentleman just accidentally took your pen.
Carl Carlson, two zero three five one, Fairwood Drive. We live directly across the lake from the resort, so across the bay, which is approximately three hundred feet max, maybe, I would say, somewhere in there. I guess my concern is, I'm all for capitalism, I'm all for making a buck, I'm all for starting your own business, and I have zero problem with that. I just think you're trying to cram something into a piece of property, not only a piece of property that's already too small, but a lake that's already too small. This, you know, Leech Lake, Malax, great, go for it. I just think that our little bay, we can hear the discussions, the campfires, every little discussion that happens over at the resort, all their cuss words, we can hear it all. And so, that's one of the biggest concerns I have. Secondly, is safety. I know a couple of people have talked about the water safety, but I'm a little bit more concerned about the traffic safety. If you guys went out there, you know, it's a very narrow road. There's approximately sixty-five houses somewhere in there, and us as residents know that when we drive down Fairwood Drive, we drive down the middle, we don't drive on the right side, because there's people walking up and down that road constantly, with their dogs, with their bikes, with, you know, just, there's a lot of foot traffic, the trail is right there, so people utilize that, which is great. I just think this, you're asking for trouble with pedestrian traffic. I don't think really anybody has brought the alcohol consideration into this yet. I don't know if that's, I assume if you're running a restaurant with a bar, you're going to have alcohol involved, so then there's boating issues there. The other issue, I think, is the safety of the dock that's proposed to come out, seventy-six feet by eighty-something feet, that's a huge dock, that would take up almost half of the bay. So, I think just a safety concern, not only pedestrian safety, but water safety as well. I think it's just a, it's just a great idea, I'm all for the idea, it's just not the right spot, so.
And I'm Stephanie Carlson, and I won't continue to repeat, I know the noise thing, like Carl said, if you were out in that bay, you can be on our property, and the people who owned the resort before you guys, sometimes would play like a little outdoor movie on like a little small screen, and my family would sit out there, and we could know what the movie was, just, and it wasn't a loud blaring movie, but you would know what the movie was just by listening. So, I think that there's a lot of, like, when you're discussing a lot of things that are maybe incomplete, or just a lot of the things that need to come together for this even to be a complete proposal, I think that one thing for me is the noise, and that's so intangible. There's a lot of tangible things that they need to work out and get to you, and all that stuff, but noise is intangible, and I don't think that people realize how easy, you know, and it's, I don't know if you guys do live, can I ask them a question? Is that, do you guys live on the property? Does someone live on the property? Or how does that work?
No.
Okay.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, I'm going to have you, keep your comments short.
Okay, I just did, no, so I was just going to say that, that's very intangible noise.
Right.
And I, I wonder who will enforce that, so, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others' public comment? And I'd like to re-remind everybody to please direct your comments to us up here instead of the applicants, and we'll try to answer them if you have any as best we can.
Hello, I'm Mitch Blums, and I live at two four three five nine Fairwood Lane, which is about eight houses down to the west from Woodson cabins. And many of the things I wrote down that I wanted to talk about have already been addressed, so I don't want to waste people's time on that, but I, it is probably the thing that we're all most worried about, is that all of us bought to live in a quiet place, and we didn't buy places next to Iron Horse, or Zorbas, or places like that. And I, as much as anybody, like to go to those places and enjoy those properties, so as we're discussing, all four, a place like this could be great, but it's the wrong location, and it's where the property is owned, so they don't have the option of putting it somewhere else on the bigger lake, would have a little bit better possibilities. But I think anywhere around the entire lake, if you were to ask the people that live right next to it, wherever it would be put in... that live right next to it, wherever it would be put in, you'd get the same response. Nobody wants to live next to a place that's going to have a lot of noise, which we assume there will be with any time. If you want to know what a deck, how busy it is, how popular it is, all you've got to do is go into Iron Horse, and think about that being right next to you. One other concern that hasn't been brought up is the, it's not, it changes the makeup of not just the residents of the resort that come there, but also the lake itself is more of a, a lake that people might come to more for boating, going to the sandbar, because now there's a place to go get something to eat, and so, Beltane has been very proud that so far there is no invasive species of zebra mussels, Eurasian millfoil, these type of things, and we know that we're going to pick up a lot more traffic, so it's going to put a lot more pressure on the people that are doing the check-in at the public access, there's only so many dollars that the Lake Association has raised to be able to fund that, along with help from the county, and it's just going to keep them a lot busier. The only other thing, I guess I had in my notes that I was going to mention, is we know that four-wheeling is very popular in this area, a lot of trails, you go into Nevis and you can see them all over the place, we know that's going to be part of what's out here, too, it's just going to be a popular place to go if it's there, and we're going to get a lot of that up and down our roads as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got a letter in, so I'm not going to repeat a lot of the stuff that other folks said, I won't do that. Just, I want you to really consider that, like everybody, a restaurant on the lake could be great, what you would be doing is adding considerable activity to the, easily the most densely developed, most heavily trafficked, other than probably the 4th of July fireworks location on the lake. It is, most of the bay shoreline is designated as sensitive area, it just, you know, you couldn't probably pick a worse spot on the lake for this. Once the new bridge goes in, with the high watermark, you'll have about six feet of clearance under that, right now you'd have closer to nine feet, so your typical pontoon or fairly large boat would be able to get through there. It is going to increase the traffic in the bay significantly, it just, it would make a lot of sense. And the one question, this is, there is currently a non-conforming cup on that property for the resort, will this be a change to that one, or will this be an additional use permit?
Eric, could you speak to that?
The, to reiterate, the existing resort use is a non-conforming use that does not have a conditional use permit. There is always the opportunity that they could apply for a conditional use permit for the resort, but they'd have some issues that they'd have to bring into compliance first. What they are proposing is a separate restaurant use that the ordinance would allow if a conditional use permit is approved.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Eric.
Good evening, Margot Bernardi.
Repeat your name again.
Margot Bernardi, 20401 Fairwood Drive. I did submit a letter, and I, on there did not talk about the DNR point on this. Right now, the pontoons would have to go where the loons are nesting, which now we're getting into our state bird, and the DNR will not appreciate more traffic going by where the loons are nesting to get to the narrows to come into the bay, because pontoons most likely will not fit under this new culvert. Speedboats, fishing boats, those will fit, but our loon nesting grounds are right around the corner, and they all have to come by that area in order to get in. And if you, you know, bring that picture down, and you look at the size of our bay, it is very, very small. And when I moved to this area, it was, again, to enjoy the wildlife. We have deer that come to the island in the winter with more commotion, more snowmobiles, you know, he's talking about the four-wheelers coming in, the snowmobile traffic will come in, and now you're talking about people without common sense, no, you can't go through that culvert, you're going to go through the ice. You can't go through people's properties with your snowmobiles, they're going to want to go across yards to get there. But we have wood ducks, we have loons, we have geese, we have foxes, all the animals that we came to love and know because we live in an area that is very quiet. They come to the area, and we enjoy them, and we will lose all of that because they'll stay away from people. DNR needs to be told what's being presented here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, this is Veronica, may I interrupt one more time?
Yep, go ahead, Veronica.
Eric, have we received any kind of correspondence from the DNR about the dock proposal? I, we've received correspondence from the county engineer for the parking, but have we, have we, but the DNR has been notified of the application per as-usual public notice, and no comments, or nothing was flagged, okay, thank you.
My name is Kristin Richter, I live at 24321 Fairwood Lane. We purchased our home almost nine years ago, we are raising our four children there, it is our only, all-the-time, full-time home, and I feel like when my children are teenagers and they're learning how to drive, I don't want them to be driving past a bar, but who knows, you know, some people are responsible, some people are not. So, just keep in mind, some of us live there all the time, it's the only place we have to live, and we appreciate your consideration.
Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment. Okay, back to our board members, are we, anybody else have questions, or?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, this is Veronica speaking, I just have a couple comments for the applicants as you listen to their public comment from your neighboring people. Just listen to their comments, listen to what they said, maybe when you come back, or if we're moving forward to table this, to give you more, to get more information from you, that's my take on this, so if that's the situation that happens here, just, there's some things that you can do to help with some of that, like maybe reducing that dock space, you know, a lot of people have talked about their concern with the traffic already. We have not received any red flags or anything from the DNR, DNR has been notified of your application, and we have not received anything, so obviously what you have is doable, and what you have is accepted, but just listening to the feedback from some of your neighbors, that might be something to think about and to maybe change. Quiet hours, obviously that's a big, big one, so, again, you haven't given us any information on what hours of operation, if you're even going to work in the nighttime, you might be running it from breakfast till three, I'm not sure yet, so, you know, just, those are just a couple of comments that I wanted to give you that you can maybe look ahead at, so...
Anybody else?
This is Mark again, I have a question for Eric. If I move to table this, Eric, do I put the time limit on it, or do we ask? So, in other words, would I make the motion that it would be tabled till next month, or how does that work? Again, please refresh my memory.
Sure, so, the operating thing, time-wise, that we have to be mindful of is the 60-day rule, which states that within 60 days of the application date, we need to take action on the application, and that would be at the county board level. We do have the ability to extend our review by giving them written notice of doing so to a maximum of 120 days from the application date. That would put us out at the end of November, so if we're looking at that timeline, the furthest out that the Planning Commission would need to act on it would be at the October meeting, and that would then give the county board time at its November meetings to take up the Planning Commission recommendation. If additional time was needed beyond that, then you could always let the applicants know of the ability to fill out one of the two versions of our waiver form from that timeline requirement, that would then give additional time if that would be something that they would find agreeable and helpful in their, the time they would need to gather the information that you might ask of them in addition to what you've already seen.
Okay, thank you. I guess I'm going to ask the applicants if you have an idea, we've presented you with a lot of stuff here tonight, how, if you're interested in us tabling it, if you're interested in moving forward, trying to meet some of the requirements you've seen here, what kind of timeframe you might think you need, that might help me, or us, make a decision on this, to how we proceed to go forward here.
Yeah, we'd be interested in that. I'm not sure if we, one of the things mentioned was maybe the survey, so I don't have, I'm not sure really how long that'll take to get something lined up, if we can do that. Some of the other stuff about, you know, getting an interior layout and things, I can definitely get worked on that in a pretty short period of time, so I'm not sure if I followed all your, what you were trying to say for timelines and deadlines and all that, but I would hope we could turn this around in, you know, within the month's time, with, you know, most, at least, as long as I get those 13 points, you know, to us, you know, right away, then, so I can, we can go down those.
Yep, and this is Veronica speaking, and then you're going to be receiving that letter from the Environmental Services Office about the violations, and you want to address those as well, that way, so you can move forward with that, so that we can have that plan as well. Do you, as when they table, or when they talk about making the motion, there's going to be a little bit more of a list, so that you know exactly what we're looking for in the criteria that we're meeting, in case you haven't-
Right.
-kept it all in your head and everything, so we'll go through that, too, that way, so you know exactly what we're looking for. Again, for myself, I also wanted to see, the next time we do a lot visit, I would like to see things staked out, and reducing that impervious surface and seeing where you can, and again, those violations might help with that, like I said, maybe that playground stuff, moving that, too, so...
And Eric, that's something you could guide us on, right?
Well, this is Mark again, Veronica, you're referring to some of the items that Ken, for instance, pointed out, in a tabling motion, those would need to be pointed out now?
It would just be beneficial for the applicants to know before we table it exactly what we're looking for, so they know why we're tabling it.
Would you be willing to make a tabling motion and include those?
Yeah, but I want clarification, Eric, you've outlined what the standard, like, they've got, they'd have two months from now to the end of October to come back to us if they did this, if we did the standard process. If they don't think they can meet that, do they then ask for more extension, or can we do a more open-ended extension at this point? What's the preferable approach?
If they can't get the information that you would want to you by the October meeting, you would need to make a recommendation on what you do have, so that the county board can then take action on it at one of its November meetings to comply with that 120-day window.
Okay, could they extend it by choice if they can't make the October, they have the open-ended that?
Yep.
So, the motion would be that we table this for action at the October Planning Commission Board of Adjustment, we ask the applicants to address all 13 items in the Environmental Services staff report, and in addition to that, address how they will handle the outstanding ordinance nonconformances, and that provide a layout for the alternate septic drain field, and a detailed description of the layout of first and second floor of the restaurant. Did I miss something? Anybody help me out?
And this is Veronica speaking, any of that outdoor, any of the seating for your maximum occupancy, and how you plan to utilize it, so...
I didn't-
She talked about the outdoor seating, the maximum-
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, when I said layout, want to know inside-out, and deal with the impervious surface issue. Hold on. Look back at my notes that I was reading off of, designed, and of course, take into consideration the issues that your neighbors have brought up, so, so with that, I make a motion, we table it with those requests for information.
Anybody here for a second?
This is Mike, I'll second it.
Okay, we've got a motion by Ken to table this application, and he's outlined the, some of the conditions we'd like to see included in an amended application, we've got a second by Mike, so I'm going to take a vote, Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
This is Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
This is Mark, I vote aye, so the motion's been tabled, you'll receive the letter from ESO, and we're done, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. You did fine, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I want to take a pee break, too.
Well, we've got to do minutes, don't we? Well, I've got to wait for him to come back.
The zoning would be through the shoreland ordinance, and so it doesn't have zoning districts, instead it allows residential dwellings, permitted default, and they want to propose a commercial, if the ordinance says-
He helps me out so much.
And they have the ability to apply for a conditional use permit-
On top of that.
While there are non-conforming uses, it doesn't meet the ordinance, but because it predates the ordinance, it's allowed to continue, as is, if they were to wish to expand the resort, you start, you would require going through a variance process. Well, a variance is a different thing than a conditional use permit.
Those minutes first, and then-
Yep. And the need for a variance-
Ken's back gavel before this movement.
This is the county level, and they're going through the appropriate process.
Okay, I'm going to call this meeting back to order, if you'd like, we can move on. That concludes Planning Commission business, we're going to move on to Board of Adjustment, and the first item on that would be the approval of the minutes from the July 24th meeting. Any comments on those minutes from my board?
This is Mike, I make a motion to approve the minutes.
This is Timothy, I'll second that motion.
Okay, we got a motion by Mike to approve the minutes, and a second by Timothy to, so we're going to take a vote, Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
This is Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
This is Veronica, I vote aye.
And this is Mark, I vote aye, minutes have been approved, so we'll move on now, our first item is old business, it's an amended variance application, 16- oh three of the Shoreline Management Ordinance for filling and excavating in a bluff impact zone and placing a driveway lakeward of the top of the bluff setback. In part two, a variance from sections five oh two point two, five oh three, nine oh one, and nine oh two of the Shoreline Management Ordinance to place a residential structure with an attached garage and deck. I see we already have our applicants up here. If you could give us your name and address for the record, and then give us a brief idea of what you're wanting to do.
Marcus and Amy Landa, and, uh, address adjacent to thirteen five seventy, Blackberry Drive, Nevis, Minnesota. And we're looking for, uh, approval of the concept of the variance of the driveway and the cabin with the garage with the septic.
Okay. Okay, any questions by my board here for the applicants?
This is Ken, I, I think when we were out there, uh, you clearly knew where the property line was, uh, on the backside of the home you tend to build. There's no contention over that property line?
Nope.
At all? It's staked?
No, it's staked, yep.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Uh, Mr. Chair, this is Veronica speaking. I just wanted to comment that, um, just for the record, because the application was first heard at the July meeting, um, and we gave them time to submit the subject design and the plan for the driveway construction, um, and the application was amended, um, to include that request to do the house, the attached garage, deck, and platform, since it is a bluff impact zone. Because this lot, this lot is one of twenty-eight riparian one-hundred-foot-wide substandard lots in the plat, um, the bluff on this lot runs throughout most of all of the lots in that plat, um, so regardless, a variance is going to be needed for any structure to be most likely placed on this lot, as with probably most of the surrounding ones with the bluff, so I am in favor of this application.
Okay, um, if there's no further comments by my board right now, I'm gonna open this to public comment right now on this application. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'm gonna close public comment. Okay, um, anybody else on the board here have questions or concerns about this application?
Yeah, this is Ken. I think, um, we had two issues, um, going back to the July. One was, um, water runoff, um, from, um, the new impervious surface, um, and also, um, the, um, septic system setup, uh, and we, there was a comment in one of the letters that came in about concern for the runoff in the swale area. Um, I think the water, stormwater plan clearly shows that, uh, there's only fourteen-hundred-some gallons more that would run directly off, and that the swale has a capacity almost three times what the total runoff will be, so there should not be any issues with, you know, water collection or, or impact to the neighbors who partially have property that run through that swale. Um, I think the other thing is that there was a proposed water collection system, which is Appendix Four, which I think addresses, uh, how that water will run off, and I think with that, uh, I think the applicants have probably satisfied the requests that we made back in July.
This is, uh, Tim, I agree with Ken. Are you ready for a motion?
Yes, I am.
Mr.?
Oh, wait, go ahead. I'm sorry, Tim, go ahead, Veronica.
I just wanna make, um, just think that I agree, I, like I said, everything has been met, and even with the stormwater management plan, with whatever motion that comes forward, um, we just wanna be sure to put that condition that they implement, the stormwater management plan?
Yep.
And along with the gutters and downspouts, as I see that you plan to do, so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
This is Timothy, I'll make a motion to approve this application with the conditions that, um, he follow his stormwater management plan.
Per, per Appendix Four of the application.
Per what?
Per Appendix Four of the application.
Appendix Four of the application. Um, I need to answer a couple findings of facts. Uh, number one, is the variance in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the official controls? I'd say yes. The development is planned in probably the least intrusive area that it could be, and it exceeds and meets all setbacks of our ordinance. Number two is the property owner proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner, not permitted by an official control. Yes, um, modest-sized house with a, uh, year-round house with a garage is, um, reasonable to have on a lot, and I'll adopt the staff's findings for the three, four, and five.
This is Veronica, I second the motion.
Okay, we have a, uh, motion by Tim, uh, to approve this application, and he's cited the conditions and given his findings. A second by Veronica. We'll take a vote. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
This is Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica?
This is Veronica, I vote aye.
This is Mark, I vote aye. Your application has been passed. You'll receive a letter from Eric's office. Thank you. Okay, our next, our next application is variance application thirteen dash V dash twenty-three by Timothy and Wendy Olson, Lot Two and part of Lot Three, Miller's Lake View, section twenty-seven, Township one forty-one, range thirty-three, Mantrap Township on Spider Lake, a recreational development lake, parcel two zero point three eight point zero zero two zero zero. Applicants are requesting variances from sections five oh two point two and five oh three of the Shoreline Management Ordinance to place a residential dwelling unit on the lot that would not meet the hundred-foot ordinary high-water mark structure setback, the thirty-foot crest of bluff structure setback, and the twenty-foot road right-of-way setback, and the ten-foot rear lot line setback. See, we've got the applicant up here. If you could give me your name and address for the record, and then just tell us briefly what you're looking to do.
Uh, Tim and Wendy Olson, uh, and then this is Brian Durgan, uh, that we hired to help draw up the plan to try to answer additional questions about what, what our proposal is, um, for the structure. So, again, as you mentioned.
Yep, I'm sorry, could you give us your address?
Oh, uh, one three two three River Drive South, Moorhead, Minnesota.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, so the, uh, the board tabled, seeking additional information, and on the site viewing, we went, went over the elevations and, uh, all the information that, uh, we were hoping we addressed, uh, um, reducing the, also reducing the, the size of the, of the structure, um, again, um, trying to, uh, address all the concerns of the board with the, um, with the proposal. Um, so, if there's any, any questions that, that you may have, have from the site view, I know Veronica had mentioned, uh, the impervious surface, um, towards the end of our meeting on Thursday, and I, I knew it was a s- a small percentage of the impervious surface, but we do have that figure, it's eight percent, uh, which is, um, much, very, much smaller than the twenty-five percent, which is required for the ordinance.
Okay, um, this is Mark speaking. Um, first of all, I'm gonna tell you that I had a chance to look over this drawing that Eric has pulled up on the screen, a little, little more since we met out there on Thursday, and, uh, well, first of all, I'm gonna offer you my apologies, because the, uh, cross-section of the house there, um, the way you held the grade down and back makes it much more
Yep.
amenable to that, and I should've spotted that. I, and when I was trying to imagine in my mind what you were gonna do, I wasn't thinking that way. I have enough experience in building, I should've known that, but I wasn't thinking about it, so I apologize for that. Um, I did also question a little bit, 'cause I was seeing different numbers. I shared that with you.
Yep.
And, um, in my mind, I'm, I'm ready to approve this application myself, um, but if I were to do it, I'd want to, uh, I think the only way in my mind that I can have any control over that bluff
Mm-hmm.
is to have an elevation, and I'm gonna assume that it's a shot that a surveyor took, so that is, shows existing, and I think you told me that, but we had some different numbers out there, and that was creating confusion in my mind, so, um, I'm looking at the number fourteen seventy point six nine. Is that, are you in agreement? I mean, there's really no way that we're gonna check that, but I mean, at least if somehow it ever came back to us, we would, I would have asked that that was a condition, um, that we, you achieved that elevation for your lowest floor, so I know you're not, you know, attempting to tear up that bluff.
Right.
But those are my thoughts on it. Um, I'll see if the board has anything further to say about it. Mike?
This is Mike. First, could you state your name and address for the record? That wasn't done?
Yes, sir. Yeah, Brian Durgan, I'm with RHRA Architects, one twelve North University Drive, Fargo, North Dakota.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
And then, um, I'm in agreement, um, I think what we asked for has been provided. There was some confusion, but that at least has been clarified in my mind, and I'm ready to move forward.
Okay, anybody else with questions?
Yeah, this is Veronica speaking. I just wanted to clarify for the record, as far as the comments go, um, for the record, the application was first considered by the board in the June twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three meeting. It was tabled to allow the applicants time to provide the survey-generated elevations above means of sea level for the proposed basement floor, the existing grade of proposed basement floor, and the proposed grade is of excavation is proposed for setting the basement elevation, the existing and proposed grades of the ground along the east exterior wall of the proposed dwelling, and the elevation of the proposed dwelling of the main floor, the total amount of excavation fill needed for the project, and the applicants have submitted that, so I just wanna make, put that out for the record, that you
Sure.
did submit what we asked for, and I appreciate that, and I thank you for taking the time to do that, because it helps us as a board move forward, and like Mike, Mark was saying, that we need all that complete information, so that when we do approve something, which I believe it sounds like we're all on the approval side, that it's gonna be built per the site plan and exactly how we envision it, so thank you so much for providing that.
This is, this is Ken. Mark, and you're, you're satisfied that if we put the condition that the lowest level should be at fourteen seventy sixty-nine or higher?
Yes, for the lowest floor, yep.
We should put that condition on, is what you'd want?
Yep.
Okay.
Um, I'm gonna open for public comment right now. Seeing none, excuse me, I'll close public comment. Uh, any other comments?
Yeah, this is Veronica speaking, and I do also want to comment that the applicants have also taken the feedback from the board members and have reduced the square footage of the application. They took the time to reduce it, took our feedback for the size lot, because it's being placed in the elevation, the, in the impact zone that it is, so just for quick reference, do you recall the square footage of the, the July, of the June twenty-sixth one? Do you have that? It's okay if you don't, I was just...
Uh, it's, I'm just under a thousand for the...
And what is your current?
Eight hundred and forty square foot per level is what I had calculated.
Okay.
Yeah, for that level, yeah.
Of this new one?
The current is, yep, eight, eight hundred and forty.
Okay, and so the previous one was about one thousand, you said?
It was just, it was just under a thousand.
Yeah, and so, yeah, and you did remove the garage and add in the screen porch and reduced it a little bit, so again, I appreciate you taking the time and the, and making, taking our feedback and shrinking it to fit the slot a little more accordingly, so.
This is Mike, I'll make a motion to approve with the condition that the lower level built at the elevation. If, Mark, you would give that one more time?
Yep, that would be fourteen seventy point six nine.
So that's the condition that we built that, in that manner.
Okay, and this is Mark, I'll second that motion. Um, and Mike, are you accepting, or?
And accepting the, uh, staff's findings of that.
Thank you. So, uh, we have a motion by Mike, and a second by myself, um, so we'll take a vote. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
This is Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
This is Veronica, I vote aye.
And this is Mark, I vote aye. Your application is passed, you'll get a letter from Eric's office stating such. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
We have, uh, a variance application twenty-one dash V dash twenty-three by Ernest Mark Coors, Reserve A, Chinook Shores, section thirteen, Township one forty-one, range thirty-four, Lake Emma Township near Upper Bottle Lake, a recreational development lake, and Lower Bottle Lake, a recreational development lake, parcel one six point five three point zero six two zero zero. Applicant is requesting a variance from section five oh two point two of the Shoreline Management Ordinance for a proposed accessory structure that would not meet the ten-foot lot line and the twenty-foot road right-of-way structure setbacks. Got the applicants here, um, could you give us your name and addresses for the record?
Ernest Mark Coors, two five six eight eight Indigo Drive.
Um, Nathan Coors is two five six, or two five eight six one Indigo Drive, it's just up the hill.
Okay, and just give us a little overview of what you wanna do here.
Well, what we're looking at trying to do is, I wanted to put a little lean-to out in front of the house, or in front of the driveway, so I could put stuff in there and kinda make it a little nicer, and if I put it back at the fifty-three-foot mark, it'll take my entire yard up where I can't drive through it, so I'm just asking to push that back eight feet, so I could get access into my backyard. It's, it's just a, it's a tough lot line that we're working with.
Okay, any questions by the board?
This is Veronica speaking. What is the current fabric carport storage unit currently housing?
The what?
The fabric carport.
Oh, did, what, we're gonna build it out of?
What, no, 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 what's in the carport that you have there now, that little arched fabric one?
Well, right now, I just, I had that pushed back, or, 'cause I had to build that entire area, so I wouldn't have water running down, so basically, that was for a water stop, so it wouldn't pour into my whole barn.
So that fabric carport that you had, that was...
Oh, oh, that fabric one, that's, that I wanna get tore down, if I can get this put up, I'm just trying to make it look nicer. I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about...
That's okay, no worries, no worries. Um, okay, so what size is that fabric one, if you're going to remove it?
That one's only twelve feet
Twelve feet.
Uh, in the opening, and then it goes back like sixteen feet. I was gonna put it there, but there's just too many trees in that area, I don't wanna take any more trees down.
This is Veronica speaking again, so I have questions only because on the application, not all of your structures are labeled with size and dimensions and lot lines as the application requests, um, so if you could, how much distance between the new shed that you have, the new accessory structure, to your property line? How much distance do you have?
From the new shed?
Mm-hmm.
Probably, uh, via...
Probably, uh, be about ten, twelve feet.
Ten or twelve? It looked a little wider than that to the, where I had, during the lot views, I visited with you about maybe putting a lean-to over there.
Well, I have that drop-off there where that...
You just have some stuff for storage, but then, then it drops off?
I had all that stuff there and that's where that trailer gets backed in so that trailer doesn't sit way out in front of the pole barn. And that's, that's what I had put in there.
Anybody else?
This is Mike. Um, I guess I have the same questions without accurate drawing on, on how many feet that shed is from the line and also the distance between, you know, the retaining wall and that side of the shed. It appears to me that, that there are permissible, permissible, or permissible spots on this lot. And, and whenever I see that, I, I question wanting to grant a variance when it could, the objective could be met by permit.
Thank you, Mike.
This is, this is Ken. Um, I think when we were out there, uh, I think Veronica, you and I kind of walked down the road and you'd have to go quite a ways before, um, you could, could you, before you could improve the, the amount of setback. If you look at that drawing we just had, you go down around the thing, the setback, meeting the twenty-foot setback from the right-of-way, doesn't improve if you'd thought about trying to move it. So one of the questions I always have, why, why do you want it there?
The, the only reason I want to put it there is there's a natural spot for it and I don't want to put it off my lean-to by that retaining wall because then you're going to have to walk through this thing every time you come in and out of your house or, I mean, you're going to be constantly walking through wood and scaffolding and that's why I wanted to push it off to the side and kind of secure it with three walls so I can hide it, you know, and just make it under a roof. I just didn't want to be walking through it every day.
What, and what do you intend to use it for?
What's that?
What, what do you, is it a woodshed or is it...
It's, it's just a storage shed. It's just a little three-sided lean-to with, you know, I'll probably end up putting a little sliding door on the front of it, but for now, I'm just going to use the leftover vinyl siding I had from the house we built and I was going to wrap it in that and...
For putting equipment in? It's not, it's not a woodshed, it's for storing equipment?
Yeah, it's mainly for like the scaffolding and, you know, ladders and, you know, just stuff like that. I'm just trying to clean up.
As I recall, there is a pretty, a really good wood vegetation tree buffer between it and the road. Um, seems the location is reasonable to me. The constraining thing is that wing on the retaining wall, the retaining wall weren't there, you could redirect that road and move it forward, but it's kind of the practical difficulty in terms of being, thinking about moving it more forward.
This is Tim. I, I had no problem where he was proposing it and the, the one thing I thought about was, uh, if a snowplow could reach it when he was winging that snow and, and blowing the wall in.
Yeah.
And I didn't think he could reach that far.
With all those trees and stuff in there.
Yeah.
I usually push the snow down about another twenty, thirty.
But I'm talking the main road.
Oh, the ma, yeah, I got you.
This is Veronica speaking. The placement that he has currently proposed is well-vegetated. The problem that I have currently is that answering affirmative to two of the questions as there are alternate places that he could put it by permit. So it's not that I'm against the spot because it is well-vegetated and it is, it's just that there are permissible options. And if he's going to move the fabric carport storage, that's more space. Again, he did comment that he did not want to have to walk beside it through the house, but he's already walking around the, the fabric one.
But the fabric, the fabric is taken up his yard and it's temporary until he builds as permanent. Then he's going to put his stuff out of there into the shed.
Again, I don't have a problem with the placement. It is very well-vegetated from the road. It's just you have to answer affirmatively to the first two questions.
Okay, this is Mark. Um, just in general, I, I have no problem with your application and, um, I think the location makes sense to me. Before we go any further with that, I don't think I've opened this one for public comment, so let's do that. Any public comment on this application? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Anybody else with comments or ready to make a motion?
This is Veronica speaking. If a motion gets towards approving the application, I would propose a condition that the fabric structure must be removed.
Okay, okay, okay.
Would you be open to that? You've mentioned that you were going to anyhow.
I have no problem with that.
So you would be open to that? Okay.
Okay. You ready?
I, I guess I'll make a motion that we accept the application with the condition that the fabric structure be removed when this is built. Um, as far as item one, is the variance in harmony with general purpose and intent of the official controls? I say although there may be room on the lot, the, the desired location is very reasonable, it only infringes eleven feet, uh, into the twenty feet of setback and it's strongly buffered from the road, both site-wise and safety-wise. Uh, two, is the property owner proposed to, proposing to use the prob, is the property owner proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner, not permitted by official control? I think the use, size, and location are very reasonable for the use that's intended. Uh, is the need for a variance due to circumstances unique to the property not created by the current priority owner? Alternate locations along the road don't improve the setback from the right-of-way and the retaining wall, um, prevents it from moving farther away from, from the road. Uh, and I see those as, um, the uniques, uniqueness of the situation. And I would say that the, um, we'll accept four and five from the staff report.
Okay, this is Mark. I'll second that motion. So we have a motion by Ken to approve this application and he's given his findings and also the condition. Um, and a second by myself, so we'll take a vote. Timothy, how do you vote?
Mr. Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
Mr. Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mr. Mike, I vote nay.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
This is Mark, I vote aye. Your motion is, your application's passed, so you'll get a letter from Eric's department stating such. Thank you so much. So we're good?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, next application we have up is variance application twenty-two dash V dash twenty-three by Todd and Julie Zyski, Unit six, Block one, Village in the Pines, Section nineteen, Township one forty-one, Range thirty-four, Lake Emma Township on Potato Lake, a recreational lake, recreational development lake, excuse me, parcel one six point three nine point nine zero six zero zero. Applicants are requesting a variance from Section seven oh two of the Shoreland Management Ordinance for proposed enlargement of a non-conforming dwelling located in the shore-impact zone. Looks like we have the applicant, so if you could state your name and address for the record and then just tell us briefly what you want to do here.
Todd Zyski, twelve eighty-eight Parkside Lane, Wacone, Minnesota.
Julie Zyski, twelve eighty-eight Parkside Lane.
Obviously, we applied for a variance, um, well, it was been, uh, last spring it got denied primarily because of the height of nineteen foot four inches. So we met with Eric with two plans, the first being the same as the previous plan with the dormers and no rear steps. But the rough pitch, like Ken had mentioned, if you could change that to achieve the two-hundred-and-five inches like Cabin Five, which was just approved, that, uh, he was open to that, but he wanted, wanted plans for that. And then the second, um, plan was, uh, being exactly the same as Cabin Five. And Eric advised us to use the same exact plan as Cabin Five. So that's, that's what we turned into you guys. Um, I reviewed the staff report and questions came up regarding, uh, the deck being added on between sometime in two thousand and eight and present. Um, the deck is the same as we purchased the property in November of twenty-one. Uh, we did not make any changes to the deck footprint and by looking at the weathering and the wood, it was probably been that way since two thousand and eight, um, in my opinion. Um, so the deck's probably been sitting like that for fifteen years and hasn't really raised any questions. So it's in harmony with the other decks. All the decks are aligned with each other and, uh, it's the same width as Cabin Five. Uh, we are removing the four-foot by twelve-foot section along the west side of the cabin, as you can see in the aerial view. Um, and also the, the rebuild is approved by our association.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments by the board?
Yeah, this is Ken. Couple, this would imply that footprint-wise, uh, keeping the deck at twelve feet, um, infringes the common area, not only on the backside, which was approved for the steps, but lakeside. Um, why wouldn't you want to, um, build the deck the same size as we approved on Cabin Five, which is, I think, eight feet by twenty-four feet? Is that, I, you're, I think that's what we measured out.
I don't remember the size of that.
Yeah.
I can pull it up a second.
Because the current deck is in violation of, uh, uh, the variance from back in two thousand and eight, however it got there.
So I think Ken's question is, had you considered that size if you're duplicating that, that...
Cabin Five.
Cabin Five.
We did not consider reducing our deck size. That's the way we purchased the property.
Right. If I understand correctly, you're, you're asking to build it, rebuild it to what it is now. That's what you're looking to do.
Right, less, less the, it was roughly four-foot by twelve-foot that goes along the west side.
Okay.
That's going to be taken off.
Okay. Anybody else, questions?
This is Mike. I appreciate what you've done here in the proposal. To me, it, it appears, uh, that you've met what we asked for. And as far as the deck, um, if I have my square footage, it's two forty now. Uh, the original variance was for one fifty. Next door is a hundred and ninety-two. It's not a real huge concern of mine. They are removing some of the deck. I can go either way on that, but I, I'm in favor of approving this application.
Thank you, Mike. Veronica?
Yeah, this is Veronica speaking as well. Again, I was going to comment the same. I appreciate you taking our feedback. Your very first application, the height was twenty-three six. You're down to fourteen, which is more in line with where you're at with the shore-impact zone and stuff. I admit the same with the deck. I would like you to be a little closer and in your, um, your footprint, all, however you have received approval from your community there that says that you can build the stairway and the deck can stay in that common area during lot views. The deck next door on Cabin number five is a little smaller, but the deck, the other direction does stick out a little bit. So you're, you are kind of right in there. So I'm like Mike, I can go either way. It can stay the same as long as they don't extend it. If he does take off the four-foot that he commented on, I would definitely be in favor of that as well. So, but I, again, I'm in favor of the application and I appreciate you taking the feedback and reducing the size because of the lot that you have and you're, you're what, twenty-three feet from that ordinary high watermark, so.
Oh, for clarification, the drawing shows that the full width of the cabin are, are twenty-four feet? Are you saying that you're going to keep that at twenty feet, twelve by twenty? And that the section on the, that four-point-seven-foot section, uh, wouldn't be there?
No, that would stay there. It's the, it's a piece that's on the west side where the steps are at. Right now, that deck extends twelve feet by.
No, I was, I'm over here.
Yeah, but this is what he's saying. He would eliminate from the current.
Okay.
Yep, this is Mark. I, I guess I concur with my fellow board members here. I, I appreciate what you've done and I have no problem with this application. I'm going to open for public comment. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Anybody ready to make a motion or? I will myself. Uh, this is Mark. I'll make a motion to approve this application and, um, I guess my only condition is that you build the deck to the current dimensions, not infringing any farther towards the lake than it currently is. That's the only, uh, condition that I ask you adhere to. And, um, I'll accept staff findings a fact.
And this is Veronica. I second the motion. And again, I'm with him that you do it per your site plan, so.
Okay, we've got a motion by myself, Mark, and a second by Veronica. Take a vote. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mr. Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
And this is Mark, I vote aye. Your application is passed. You're set to go. Get a letter from Eric. Thank you so much. Okay, next application we have up here is variance application twenty-three dash V dash twenty-three by Timothy and Marilyn Kapoche. If I killed that, I'm sorry. Um, pardon, is that a table? Okay. Okay, well, yep. First, we had, that application has been voluntarily tabled by the applicant. Um, so we'll be moving on to the next one, which is variance application twenty-four dash V dash twenty-three by Brian Woolhouse. Lot three, Block one, Cabacona Park, Section thirty-four, Township one forty-three, Range thirty-two, Lakeport Township on Cabacona Lake, a recreational development lake, parcel one nine point three seven point zero zero two zero zero. Applicant is requesting a variance from Section seven oh two of the Shoreland Management Ordinance for a proposed addition to a non-conforming dwelling located in the shore-impact zone. And we have our applicants here. If you could give us your name and address for the record and then tell us what you want to do.
Brian Woolhouse, uh, three zero five zero Kalen Avenue, St. Michael.
Okay.
Kelly Woolhouse, three zero five zero, uh, Kalen Avenue, St. Michael.
Okay, and just a little idea of what you're doing here?
Yeah, so we're just, uh, looking to add a six-hundred-square-foot addition to the southeast corner of the cabin. Um, we provided the measurements to Eric, uh, last week after you guys met with us.
Okay.
So the stakes are as they were when you guys were on site and then we actually came up with some square footage, so.
Perfect.
Okay. Any questions or comments by my board?
This is Veronica speaking. I just have a supportive statement, um, that the cabin was built before the Shoreland Management Ordinance was enacted and what is now the non-conforming ordinary high-watermark setback of forty-eight feet. The proposed addition will be to the rear, the non-lakeside of the cabin, which maximizes its ordinary high-watermark setback and places it outside of the shore-impact zone. Um, it's a relatively small addition. It's a modest addition, so I'm in favor of the application and I appreciate you giving us the feedback with the proper numbers and labeling. Thank you.
Anybody else? Um, while we're thinking on that, I'll open for public comment. And seeing none, I'll close public comment. Any other comments from the board or anybody ready to make a motion?
Veronica, I can make a motion if everybody's, no comments?
Yep, I'm good. Anybody else? Go ahead, Veronica.
Okay, this is Veronica, I make a motion to approve the application as the site plan sketch and adopt... I make a motion to approve the application as the site plan sketch and adopt the staff's findings of facts.
Veronica, a question. Is there some way in your motion we should... Because the original application says 500 square feet. There was a follow-up memo. Is there some way we should reference that that is the document to be used?
Yeah, you wanna use this document here.
Yeah, you might wanna reference that email as the official...
Sure, yep. So I heard the site plan document that we received from the applicant with the actual measurements from the email.
This is Mike. I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Veronica to accept this application, or approve it, I should say, and a second by Mike. Take a vote. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy. I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken. I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
And this is Mark. I vote aye. Your application has been approved. You're all set to go with a letter from Eric's office. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next variance application is variance 25-V-23 by Steve Thompson, part of Government Lot One, Section 12, Township 140, Range 34, Henrietta Township on Boulder Lake, a recreational development lake, parcel 13.12.00600. Applicant is requesting a variance from Sections 502.2 and 801.3 of the Shoreland Management Ordinance for a proposed drain field to be located within the 150-foot ordinary high-water mark setback and 75-feet ordinary high-water setback such that the requested setback cannot be approved administratively. So do we have the applicant here? Mr. Thompson, we do not.
Do we need to check the hallway, Eric?
I can.
Just in case.
Okay, so we do not have the applicant here. Any comments by my board about this application?
Yeah, this is Veronica speaking. I just wanted for the record to explain what the necessary purpose is. The application is a follow-up to the variance 38-V-22 that was approved at the November 2022 meeting for a new replacement septic to be located 69 feet from the ordinary high-water mark. The summer when the designer and installer went to install the system and measured the ordinary high-water mark setback to the drain field, he realized he mismeasured the drain field ordinary high-water mark setback and found that the ordinary high-water mark setback was 57.8 instead. He thus did not install the drain field and installed new tanks, his holding tanks, to get the applicant by because the system had insufficient drain field and it was hydraulically failing. The council affirmed that this new variance was necessary and therefore that's where we are today with this current application.
Thank you, Veronica. I'm gonna open for public comment. And seeing none, I'll close for public comment. Anybody else with comments or ready to make a motion?
Ken, just some clarification. This drawing showed 51 feet 8 inches. The staff report said 57.8 inches. Is that a typo? And it is really 51.8 feet that we're approving? Or is it 57?
It's very likely an inadvertent typo due to the way that the measurement was written on the application.
Okay, so it's 51.8. Okay.
This is Mike. I'll make the motion to approve at the 51.8 distance. This is a revisit of the only possible spot and I appreciate the consideration the installer had for asking permission. And I'll accept the staff's findings of fact.
Okay, and this is Mark. I'll second Mike's motion. So we have a motion by Mike to approve and a second by myself. We do a vote here. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy. I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken. I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica?
Veronica, I vote aye.
And this is Mark. I vote aye. The application has been approved. Okay, the next one is variance application 26-V-23 by Stephen Valenti and Harleen Hatterman Valenti.
That was tabled.
Yep. And this one has been voluntarily tabled by the applicants until the September meeting, so we'll move on. Next one. Variance application 27-V-23 by Mary and Howard Shannard. Lot 16, Sky Manor Arrow Estates, Section 9, Township 141, Range 35, Arago Township on Island Lake, a recreational development lake, parcel 02.39.01700. Applicants are requesting a variance from Part One, Sections 502.2 and 503 of the Shoreland Management Ordinance to place a dwelling within a bluff impact zone and Part Two, Section 903.3 of the Shoreland Management Ordinance for a proposed driveway to be located within the 10-foot side lot setback. And the applicant's here? We do. Could you give us your name and address?
Howard Shannard, 11415, 242nd Court, Lakeville, Minnesota.
I'm Matt Bergy. I'm with Wausau Homes Bemidji. I'm at 920 Washington Avenue South, Bemidji, Minnesota, 56601.
Okay, and just a brief overview of what you're asking for in this application?
Yeah, we're just asking to edge up into the bluff zone, to move the house up a little further, so there's, there's a lot of large redwoods on there. And I'm trying to take down as few as possible. And by moving it up just a little bit onto the one edge, about 17 feet, that saves all those down there.
Okay. By redwood, you're referring to those Norways?
Yeah.
Right there? We saw out there and see in your drawing here?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions by the board here or comments?
This is Mike. There's a certificate of survey that shows a circular drive. And then there's the site plan that shows, it's a, it appears to be a circle drive, but it's not a circle. Which one of those are you using or is it a combination? What are you proposing?
The, the original certificate of survey is what is currently there. And the, the other document is what is proposed.
Okay, that's, I wanted to make sure that I was seeing that right.
Because of the two contiguous lots, we have to have two drain field sites. And that is one of the reasons that we're asking for the, the one driveway to be within the 10-foot.
This is Veronica speaking. So it has been brought to our attention that Arago Township has a side lot line setback for your driveway as well. So currently, your proposal would not have, you would have to get approval from your township first before that. So that, that has been brought to our attention. That's one of the things that we would need to address.
Veronica, not only setback, but the...
And the number, limits the number. Yeah, you're only allowed one, not two as well. Yeah.
So I'm gonna ask the applicant, were you aware of that restriction by Arago Township? No, I wasn't. Okay.
This is Mike. I guess I have issues with this, one on, both on the driveway design, the lot line limits, and also then with, with the driveway going into the second lot. But the real issue I have is with encroachment on, on the ordinance, whereas trees come and go, and even though those are beautiful red pine, construction that close and with driveway being put in, chances are they're gonna go sometime anyway. So I don't see that as a rationale for encroaching within the setback. So I'm not in favor of this application based on that.
Thank you, Mike. Anybody else with comments or concerns?
A question. How wide is the driveway where it goes between the trees and your garage? Is that 12 feet? I can't remember when they're out there.
It's, it's about 12 feet.
And, and is the garage 34 feet wide?
The garage is 30 feet.
Is what?
30 feet.
30 feet. So it's 30 by 30?
30 by 30, that's correct.
Okay. Not unreasonable. Garage is 30 by 24. You could gain six feet there and 12 feet, 18 feet. If you didn't have that driveway and cut the garage back, you could fit the house in pretty close to meeting the setback. Says nothing about whether the trees are gonna die anyway.
Yeah, the trees will go if it's moved back, yeah.
But you could get by with only getting rid of two of them based on your drawing. So I, I, there's, there's room to meet the requirements.
This is Mark. Eric, would you again refresh my memory on the, the concerns regarding what Arago Township's restrictions are? Even if the boards wanted to act positively on this, they would require approval from Arago before we could act? Is that correct? In other words, we couldn't, we couldn't do anything to approve this without knowing what Arago's position on this would be? Am I, am I right on that or am I understanding that correctly?
Eric speaking, there's a couple of options available concerning that aspect, so that thankfully was brought to our attention during the lot view. Had the department known of the township requirements before processing the application, our application instructions state when there's township approval that's required for an application that we require that as a prerequisite before accepting the application. In this case, we didn't learn of that township requirement until after the application had been processed. So the board would have a couple of options. One would be you could approve it with the condition that the township approval must be obtained or else the, the board's approval would be void. Second option would be you could say you wanna know the outcome of the township's consideration of that before making a decision, in which case you would then table the application. We'd again extend our review window to that 120 days. And hopefully the township would be able to make a decision within that time and then have that be brought back to the board and have that be within that 120-day window and take this up at a latter meeting. So those would be the board's two options.
Or unless we chose to deny it, right? That would be our third option?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions or comments here? I don't think I've opened for public comment, so I'll do that now. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Any further comments by the board here?
Sure, yeah, this is Veronica speaking. So since you were unknown, that information was unknown to you as well, depending on how the members here go, but would you be most, would you want to request us to table that so that you could have information and provide Arago Township the opportunity to... Because I mean, if, if you go through the township first and if they give you approval, then, you know, you might have better chances. If they deny you right off the bat, then you would have the opportunity to amend your application, get that driveway off of there, and maybe move your structure back to meet setbacks, you know? You've got a few things to think about that you might, you know, or there's a possibility that it could, it could get denied as well tonight, but just wanna try to get your feedback where you're looking since this information is new to you as well.
Yeah, we could table it.
I mean, that's just an option as far as, I'm not sure where my board members are, but just since you were unaware of the Arago Township information, that's just something that you might wanna consider.
Yep.
A question.
Ken, go ahead.
Where's the alternate drain field? Choose proposed drain field. Did I hear him say their alternate is on the property next door?
No. That's why, that's why the driveway has to swing out so far is to make room for a second.
Yeah, I guess it doesn't show it.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so did I gather that you're interested in pursuing this with Arago, so you're asking us to table it?
Yes.
Okay.
Could I ask one more question?
Sure, you can.
Why, why do you think you need the whole circular driveway? You have a, you have a large turnaround area by your garage and apron and so on. Why would you?
Well, that, that apron's not that large. And if you bring up a trailer, it's very difficult to try to back that back around and then try to get back down the driveway. So where if you have a loop, you can bring a trailer up and then you can drive it back down the other side. And it just makes it much easier to, to move around with a boat trailer or a snowmobile trailer or anything like that.
Okay.
This is Mike. Just for the record, I, I'm okay with tabling it, but I will still have great difficulty if the setbacks aren't met. And depending on what the township goes, may alter my opinion about the driveway situation. So with that in mind, I'll make the motion that we table this application.
And this is Veronica speaking. That also just gives the application, if it gets denied, they can withdraw the application as well. You know, if they, if they see that it gets, you know, that second driveway gets denied, you either have the option to withdraw your application as well, so?
Okay, this is Mark. I'll second your motion, Mike. So we have a motion by Mike to table and a second by myself. Take a vote here. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy. I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
And this is Mark. I vote aye. So your motion's been tabled. You'll have time to check with Arago and you're good for the moment.
And this is Veronica speaking. I believe you would need to contact ESO if you make any amendments if the Arago Township approval goes any different and you change the location of your proposed structure. You would definitely have to talk to Environmental Service Office in case you have to be re-noticed or anything.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Veronica. Okay, next we have a application, a variance application 28-V-23 by Crow Wing Crest Lodge, part of Government Lot One, Section 15, Township 141, Range 32, Akeley Township on 11th Crow Wing Lake, a recreational development lake, parcel 01.15.00710. Applicant is requesting a variance from Section 701 of the Shoreland Management Ordinance to replace and enlarge a structure that is part of a non-conforming use. And I've got my applicant here, so if you could give me your name and address first of all?
Very good. I am Ryan Neely. I live at 31161 County 23 in Akeley.
Okay. And then give us just a brief description of what you're asking for in this application.
The particular cabin in question number 12 there is kinda falling apart, so we're looking to rebuild it. During that process, our hope is to enlarge it enough to allow handicap accessibility, wheelchair maneuverability, that sort of thing.
Okay. Any questions or comments by the board?
Again, I think the only, the only point of contention here at all, given that they would like to meet the ADA requirements, is the deck encroaching a little bit closer to the lake. However, after observing a smaller deck, it would be almost impossible for ADA activity if we didn't approve the deck as proposed. So I'm thinking that there's really no issues.
Thank you, Ken. Anybody else?
This is Veronica. I have the same feelings as Ken. The deck doesn't come out, extend too much further than those two steps that are already there, and those steps are going to be removed anyhow, so I'm, I'm content with the site plan and the proposal that they have.
Thank you, Veronica. I, I guess, this is Mark speaking. I guess I concur with her and that, and I'm fine with this application as it's presented. I'm going to take a moment to open for public comment. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Anybody ready to make a motion?
This is Mike. I'll make the motion we approve and accept the staff's findings of fact.
This is Mark. I'll second his motion. So we have a motion by Mike with approval of staff findings of facts, no conditions, and a second by me. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy. I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
And this is Mark. I vote aye. Your application's been approved. You're good to go. You'll get a letter from ESO. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next application here, variance application 29-V-23 by Randall and Brenda Lindeman, Lot 10, Swastika Park, Section 21, Township 140, Range 34, Henrietta Township on Long Lake, a recreational development lake, parcel 13.45.00400. Applicants are requesting a variance from Section 704 of the Shoreland Management Ordinance from the requirement that a non-conforming lot have room for two standard septic system sites that meet all setbacks in order to be developed into an improved lot. Got my applicants here, so if you could give us your name and addresses for the record.
Randall Lindeman, 5137 Russell Avenue South. That's Minneapolis.
And Brenda Lindeman, 5137 Russell Avenue, Minneapolis.
Okay, and then just a brief description of what you're asking the board for here.
We're asking the board for a variance for the redundant or second septic system requirement due to, I guess I would characterize it not as a small lot, but a narrow lot with dimensional challenges.
Okay, thank you. This is Mark speaking. I guess here, because I'm not familiar with this application for an alternate site, I've kind of would prevail upon Eric from ESO here and Tim and for their guidance on, and they seem to be okay with this as an alternate site. Is that my understanding, Eric?
Yeah, the, it would be a, the alternate site would be to reuse the, the site proposed for the initial system, and that would be termed an experimental system in the ordinance, and the reason for that is that you would be putting the replacement drain field in an area that had been altered from the original soil conditions. So in those cases, a system can perform properly, but you don't have the same assurances of that performance as you would if it was an undisturbed original soil site. So that's why the ordinance requires for development of a lot that there be two original undisturbed soil locations with sufficient space for drain fields. And in this case, the driveway and proposed detached garage would be located where those sites were originally identified in an earlier variance that was approved to allow the lot to be developed.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Any other comments?
Yep, this is Veronica. I just have a supporting statement as well that the property owners are proposing to use this in a reasonable manner because the lot is still being proposed to be developed in accordance with that 2001 variance. In that variance, they were allowed to have no more than two-bedroom home placed on the lot, and that 25% impervious surface is still met, so they are doing their best.
Okay. Anybody else?
This is Ken. The shed that's there seemed to be problematic, can I put it that way? I think you indicated that you would move it to where the garage is going to be built when you put in your septic system, and then I presume you would get rid of that shed.
That's the plan.
Because I see no place on your property for it. So I think maybe that could be a condition, that the shed be removed once the garage is built.
Yeah, agreed. That was the next question I had, is if you will still meet the impervious surface if you retain the shed. So that was one of the concerns I had.
Yeah, probably not with the shed and the garage.
Correct, yeah.
But the, as we discussed in the view of the construction starts, if the lake moves backwards, so the shed has to go to accommodate the garage, and we plan on moving it off the property at that time.
Yeah, I agree, Ken. I think that you can place the condition on there.
Just a second here. I have another possible thing, condition-wise, you know, because this is a small, very small lot, it was approved to have two bedrooms, meet the 25% impervious surface. I think it may be appropriate for us to put a condition on that the, the structure that's going to be built, be built at the location, at the size for the design that has been proposed such that we can in fact guarantee that we meet that, that prior, prior variance, so.
Okay. I'm going to open for public comment. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Anybody else have any comments or ready to make a motion?
I think I could probably, I'll make the motion that we approve the variance with two conditions, that the structure be built per the plan of the application with the setback location and footprints, such that it complies with the two-bedroom, 25% impervious surface of the 2001 variance, and that the current shed be removed when the new garage is completed.
Okay, this is Mark. I'll second Ken's motion. Ken made a motion to approve this application with conditions that he noted and accept staff findings of fact, and I've seconded it. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy. I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken. I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
This is Veronica. I vote aye.
And this is Mark. I vote aye. Your application's been approved. You'll get a letter from ESO stating such. They're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark, I'm going to step out and just let the folks, I'm going to let the folks in the hallway know that we're onto the.
Okay. I'll wait until you do that.
Yeah, he's going to, he's going to announce it.
Yeah, it's good. Remind me. Okay.
Correct.
All right. Part of Government Lot 3 and 4, Section 8, Township 141, Range 34, Lake Emma Township on Pickerel Lake, a recreational development lake, parcel 16.08.00710. Applicant is requesting Part 1, a variance from the requirement in Section 402, Item 7, Point D of the Shoreland Management Ordinance, that a recreational vehicle campground must have a centralized subsurface sewage treatment. And Part 2, a variance from the 150-foot ordinary high-water mark drain field setback requirement in Sections 502.2, 801.3, and 1013.7, Point A of the Shoreland Management Ordinance. Got my applicant up here, so if you could give me your name and address?
Yep, Michael Soline, 3809 Heather Valley Road, Apartment 112, Spogewig, Wisconsin.
Okay, and give us a little overview here of what you're asking for in this application.
Yes, I am asking for variation, variance from the centralized system, asking for two as part of best practices to be able to serve a proposed campground and looking to develop, one of them being more towards the south end, the second, which is Part 2 of the variance application, being at the north end, being within the 150-foot setback of the ordinary high-water mark, but behind the 100-foot setback to serve part of that campground.
Okay, any questions or comments by my board for the applicant?
This is Timothy. I have a question. On the septic system you're proposing that's closer than the 150, what are your future plans for the vegetation between that location and the OHW of Pickerel Lake?
Between the septic site and the lake, other than a potential path, nothing else, just a walking path.
So you're going to leave it natural, just like it is?
Correct.
Okay.
So 100-foot would pretty much remain as natural vegetation.
Would be a walking path in between the 100-foot and the lake.
My other question, and on the utilities and the layout of this, did, did Northwestern do this design for you?
That's the original.
I believe, Engineering Premier's.
Okay.
I know they worked and communicated with our septic designer as well.
Yeah. I understand exactly why it's designed the way it is. It's, it is more economical to be central, so you don't have to be from one end and have huge lines for water or septic to carry for full length of a property, so.
Eric, this is the original, that's not the amended drawing? There, okay.
That's the one I'm talking about.
Yeah, but they weren't seeing that on the screen.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so does, so that central in there, and that, that, down the middle, all of those proposed sites are probably on the topography, it's the highest level, and so it naturally drains both ways from that property to the north and to the south.
Correct.
Okay, so it's a common sense layout.
That, that and the other thing with the drain field, probably half of that drain field is still, meets the 150 feet if you kind of estimate there, too, so.
Anybody else on the board here with comments or questions?
What, what we have before us today is strictly, will the, we grant the variance for the two septic systems, the two different parts, and I agree it makes sense, and, and based on simply that's what we're voting on today, I would be in favor of this application.
Thank you, Mike. Anybody else with comments? If not, I'm going to open it for public comment, and assuming that I have some, I already see a gentleman coming up, I'm going to remind everybody that we are voting tonight. We're here addressing simply those sewage systems, nothing else, not a CUP or the campground itself, so please restrict your comments to that so that we can not waste our time. And if you have submitted written comments and you're coming up, please don't duplicate what you've already said in writing, as that's been admitted into the public record, so we want you to just say what you have to say, but hopefully fresh stuff and nothing repeated. So go ahead.
Thank you. Kurt Sale, mailing address 2712 South Glendale in Sioux Falls. My property on Pickerel Lake is 17682 Happy Drive. I can see I'm here with some of my friends tonight, we're concerned about this, but I'm going to address the two parts that you're talking about tonight. Part 1, with two septics, makes sense to me. It would be feasible to do that and a redundancy when, if something fails. The second part, I go right off of the staff report, and when it says, "Seeking relief from the 150-foot setback when there is ample room on a property to meet the setback is not a reasonable request." So I would request that the board here tonight, and I know we've put in a long night, would deny Part 2.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
I have, my address is 18549 Ithaca Drive. I'd like to speak in favor of denying this variance. I disagree with the economics that the staff report had for number one. That was, if he reduced his number of RV sites, he'd certainly have more room to meet the setbacks. So that's an economic consideration in my view. I also am concerned on the, other than my comments that I made, and the thing is with the design of the flows for this. I'm very familiar with small homes, ADUs, accessory dwelling units, and what's happening in the RV industry with year-round residences. And I'm concerned with the 100 gallon per day for the full hookup sites and the 50 gallon per day for the non-hookup sites. Looking at the average use per person, that's national statistics, it's 100 gallons per day per person, and we're talking about 100 gallons per day per RV. And I'm saying if, that just doesn't equate along with the, the numbers, which will be addressed in the, in the CUP, I would hope. But I'm looking, and also another consideration would be with the, what you would allow for cabins there. I'm looking at a VRBO near me, and I'm, and they redesigned their septic system, and I'm reading right off of their application, and for a two-bedroom cabin, the estimated flow for a Class 2 system is 225 gallons per day. So I'm saying, where are we coming up with this? For RVs, a special exception for these, these tiny homes, I'm going to call them, and we've got ice castles, those are year-round. So I'm, I'm assuming that this is going to be, it looked to me that the design of the sewer system was down nine feet in spots, so that's going to be a year-round setup. These could be rented out as a full year-round living site. So I, I'm concerned about that, and I'll address the CUP when that comes up with the numbers based on the number of parcels that are currently on the lake. But that's my septic information that, that I'd like you to consider.
Okay, thank you so much. Anybody else for public comment? Anybody else for public comment?
These, these systems are not hooked up to septic system, right?
My name's Gary Stocker. I live at seventeen-nine-nine-nine Ivy Drive on Pecorale Lake. I'm not agreements to any of this stuff. Pecorale Lake, when you look at the whole lake, it's a three-hundred-and-eleven acre lake, but it's split into two, so you're dealing with a hundred-and-fifty acres on both sides. In the last fifteen years, we've lost six feet of lake of, of water on the west side to begin with. The water clarity on that lake is already down to eight feet. In comparison to the east side, when you put the secondary disc down, you can see sixteen feet. The west side of the lake, this is an environmental big problem right now. We don't need any additional septic or water runoff or nothing in that lake. Thank you.
Did you, uh, sign in on the log? Name and address, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment?
My name is Jeff Dubay, and I live on Pecorale Lake, and I, I have a problem when I, with the numbers that I'm hearing. I think so far you're doing a great job with the technicalities and the legalities, but I think this is coming down more to a common sense thing. If you've ever been at a campground, first of all, talking forty-seven spots, as soon as that RV pulls in, you can double that number because you know there's a husband and wife pulling that. And as soon as they get set up, if you, like I say, if you've ever been around a campground, first thing, once they're set up, sitting there for the season, pretty soon it's the friends, relatives coming up to join them. So when you start talking about the gallons per person, you can, you can throw that forty-seven number right out the window, because you're gonna be looking at closer to four to five-hundred people. That's a three-hundred-acre lake, and it cannot sustain that kinda traffic. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else for public comment?
Mr. Peterson?
Sign in, please.
Yes, sir. Uh, my name, yes, I will. My name is Richard Smith. I live south of Pecorale Lake. I use Holly Road to, uh, access to town, et cetera. And, uh, I really believe the decision that needs to be made here is not the decision about whether or not a variance should be granted to this, because I'm looking at these maps. Have these maps been available to the public to this point?
Yes, sir.
I did not find them on Albert County's website.
They're on the website.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna refer to Eric there, and he says they are, excuse me, so...
I'm sorry.
This is Veronica speaking.
I'm agreeing with the, uh, with the other, uh, gentlemen that have spoken regarding the size of this development, and the quantities of sewage that are gonna be generated by the size of this development, and the impact of that upon the lake. But I think there's a larger picture here that's gonna be addressed at a later date on this thing, and my feeling is, is that if this is approved now, it's a backdoor way into this project getting approved generally in a county.
Mr. Chair, this is Veronica speaking.
Yep, go ahead.
Just to let you know, sir, anytime that you have, um, concerns or questions about, um, documents and paperwork that you're having difficulties finding, please feel free to contact the Environmental Services Office, and they'd be happy to guide you through the website and how to do it. I used to work there, I know how that works, and I helped many customers. So if there's something you cannot find and have troubles, it's not a problem to contact them, and they'll help you find your documents.
Should've been attached to the variance documents, sir.
It is, sir. It is in our packet.
Not if you go to that, if I go to that link, all that comes up is his application, and then a map of Pecorale Lake, and a map, and a closer detailed map of the property, that's what I found this afternoon.
There, there's a, there's a very thick packet, so it is in there, so... Just wanted to make sure that you, you're welcome to always contact them. I was always helpful trying to help my patrons.
One point of clarification, because a lot of people have asked questions out in the hallway, uh, if you could explain to the people here, what happens next? You've mentioned a CUP. Will there be another public comment period that goes to the County Board of Commissioners, for instance? There, there's, there's a lot of information here that people would like to know about how this happens, you know? Uh, I commented, unfortunately I have jobs, so I, I sent comments in, but I didn't make the three-thirty deadline, and so I was told they were booted back, and none of you got to see any of that. Uh, and I understand that's how the process, uh, works, uh, in all of this, but it, you know, I read in terms of, of, of how this process went down, that only people that lived within five-hundred feet, or had property within five-hundred feet of this particular property that wants to be developed, were notified. And I think, given the ramifications and the size of this, uh, development that's being requested here, uh, by the county, you know, through the county, uh, five-hundred feet is definitely not enough. Everyone who's in that proximity should've been notified about this particular variance.
Okay, um, I'm gonna refer to Eric on this, and just let him address your concerns, would you please, Eric?
Sure, as to the availability of the information in this application, what is on the screen is the county website, and like Veronica said, we'd be happy to help you or anyone with navigating that to find the information. The proposal for the campground, since variances are necessary procedurally, variances, if they're a part of a proposed project, must be acted upon first, prior to any conditional use permit being acted upon. The reason for that is that the county board does not have the authority to grant variances, only the Board of Adjustment does. So that, that's the reason for the variance preceding any conditional use application. Statutorily, we are required to give notice in the newspaper, which we do. In addition, we also are required to give notice to landowners within a five-hundred-foot radius of the subject property, so we complied with that statutory requirement. When it comes to a conditional use permit application, we also are required to give notice in the newspaper, but in addition, we expand the notification radius for a conditional use permit to a quarter-mile radius around the subject property, and if that fails to notify at least ten landowners, then we expand that radius until we receive a minimum of ten property owners that would be notified. The conditional use permit, if and when that application is submitted, that would accompany what you're seeing on the screen with the variance application, would also have a separate public hearing that the Planning Commission would conduct. You, and others would be given the opportunity to comment at that, and then the Planning Commission would make a recommendation to the county board, which I would then, as staff, present to the commissioners at a, one of their meetings. The county board does not generally open a public comment period on agenda items. They do offer a general public comment period at the beginning of each of their meetings, and anyone would be welcome at that general public comment, uh, opportunity to voice any comments concerning that particular proposal or any other matter.
So it can be directed at this particular proposal, you're saying? In a general comment thing?
When the time would come, yes.
Yeah, when it, okay. Just a procedural question, since I live close to this piece of property, uh, but outside of that five-hundred-foot thing, the people who were within five-hundred feet, what did they receive, uh, from the county regarding this, you know? They, if they were notified, how were they notified? Did they get a packet of information? Did they get the maps? Did they get the layout of the development? I mean, how much information was there? Because a lot of people don't know what's happening, uh, directly with this. There's all sorts of numbers running around, uh, out there, so...
They receive a public notice letter that is sent to them through the US mail, and I'll pull it up on the screen so that you can see what it contains. It gives the notice of the meeting date, the time, the lot view date and time, a general summary of the proposal, and it then also provides a link that they can use to access the entire application and supporting documents through our website that's on the screen. So this is the notice that people receive.
Just that?
Correct.
And the assumption that they're gonna be able to have internet to be able to get, to get all this information?
Or they can stop by our department and view hard copies.
Okay.
So, sir, we've exceeded your three minutes, so...
Yes, sir, I understand that, so, thank you.
Yep, we're gonna cut you off, thank you so much. More public comment?
I'm Brian Long, two-zero-three-six-four Herman Lane in Lake Emma Township. Um, I think I just got my questions answered, so it won't take long. I'm actually a, also a township supervisor for Lake Emma Township, um, and I'll just add, it maybe doesn't quite connect directly to the, these two pieces, but we have some deep concerns about the road usage on both Holly Road coming in from the south, and on Two-seventieth coming in from County Four. So we definitely wanna consider that, and maybe that comes up in the CUP process, it sounds like, so... But it's a deep concern for us, a lot of use on that right now, and a lot of condition issues, um, and more traffic's gonna be an issue for us.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else with public comment?
Now, hopefully I didn't freeze to death and figure out what I wanted to say. I'm Teresa Zollinger, and I live at eighteen-two-nine-eight Hannah Lane, and I'm against totally this, um, variance. Um, I had to be asked for a variance when I came in to the lake, and I had to get an environmental variance for that, and it really made me sweat, and then I see this gentleman come in and ask for a variance for something this big, and it's not, um, a need, it's a want, and it's for basically, um, financial gain, and it's gonna impact our lake, a big portion of it, and if we don't look in the environment now, we need to, at what's happening to it, and giving a septic grant for a variance like this is gonna really hurt our environment. And I see this Mike, he already said that you were gonna go ahead and grant this, that you approved this, and that disturbs me because you hadn't even heard any of the comments, and I'd also like to know, when are our letters that we've sent in been given any kinda consideration? When did you guys read all these letters, and...
Well, I can answer for myself, ma'am.
Sure.
The letters that I received, the whole packet, I read each and every one of them. I can't tell you that I've memorized them, but I did go through each one and look at the concerns, and I'd be surprised if the rest of my board member ha- haven't done the same thing. So we, we have reviewed, um, those letters, and, uh, I think that's all you can ask of us at this point.
Okay. Well, I'm just, I'm disappointed that I'm already hearing before, you know, some of this stuff.
I'd like to respond to that.
Sure.
What I think I said is that, as the application stood, I'm in favor of it.
Uh-huh.
We're not through with the process. Now, if I hear new and compelling information, different from the comments I had, I reserve the right to change, because that was not in front of me at the time. I was stating what was in front of me at the time. I am not discounting anyone's public comment.
Okay.
Thank you, Mike.
I appreciate that, 'cause I wanted to just find out.
Anything else?
Nope, that's good.
Okay, thank you so much. Anybody else with public comment?
Uh, good evening, so, um, my name's Tim Olson, I live at eight-sixteen Fairview Avenue North, St. Paul, Minnesota. I have spent the last thirty years coming to one-seven-seven-four-two Happy Drive, uh, Park Rapids, Minnesota, where my family has been for the last sixty-eight years. I submitted a letter that talked about some of the concerns that I have, but I wanna reiterate something, or not reiterate, but add additional character to something that was said by Kurt at the beginning, which was that Part Two of the variance, the environmental report found that there was no topographical or soil constraints that would prevent a drain field meeting the one-hundred-and-fifty-foot setback. It stated that this would not meet the character of what the variance intended to do, and it was marked as no. What I'd just like to reiterate for everyone is that we are stewards of the lake, it is not something that we should be, uh, you know, profiteering from this and being, uh, solely focused on commercial use is really not a strategy for long-term viability of the lake. Other people have mentioned environmental concerns that are dealing with the, um, level of visibility in the lake. I think that with these drain fields, it's incredibly important that the layers of silt provide the, uh, filtration out of harmful chemicals that are consumed from people, from antibiotics. There are other issues with, uh, nitration of, of lakes as they enter the groundwater and then go into the freshwater lake. I'm extremely concerned about violating the, uh, one-hundred-and-fifty-foot setback. I think that it could be sounded under Part One to grant multiple septic sites, but I just think that, like, it would be a really good move for, uh, adherence to Part One, but denial of Part Two. So I'd ask that the variance be denied in its entirety with a better alternative that conforms to Part One but not Part Two. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment?
If I can add one thing?
That's my...
That's your call.
I'd like to go within my three minutes, but...
I'm gonna let you do it, but please try to make it brief.
Yeah, I, I understand, it's getting awful...
And give me your name again verbally.
John Griebler.
Okay.
One-eight-five-four-nine Ithaca Drive. Um, uh, the other concern I had was, uh, with the, uh, privies for, uh, uh, you know, all the boat launch is gonna come off of the current boat launch, because he doesn't have a boat launch in his proposal at all, so, um, where are these extra forty-seven sites, because there's only, I think, twenty or so boat slips? Where are they gonna use restroom facilities?
We're addressing the...
Septic?
Yes. We're not addressing any of those issues. So if that's your concern or question, we'll save that for a possible later date.
I'm just looking at the impact on the septic system, because I don't think any of that was considered, all the extra usage that's gonna be generated in the septic system.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I thank the board for listening to me for a brief moment tonight. My name is Donald G. Tim. I live on Hideaway Drive, eighteen-five-seven-six. I've served on many boards like you are sitting on tonight, so that's why I'll make a brief. I see the biggest concern for this particular variance is the septic setback. And as Eric pointed out in his recommendations, he said there is no reason not to have it back one-hundred-and-fifty feet, even if you have to, because of the size of this property. So I would strongly urge this board to not approve this variance, simply because you don't have to do it. You really don't. You really don't. Within the rules that you have to go by, which I understand, it should be denied. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Further public comment? Okay, with that, I'm going to close public comment. Board, do we have any other comments or questions for the applicant?
Yeah, this is Ken. In reading the various things in hearing and being out there thinking about if we wanted him to meet the 150 feet, it would appear that Sites 1 and 2 might be good candidates for this drain field if we want him to meet the 150 feet. I have no idea what the soils were like, but that's wide-open field way down there to the left in that first row, if you know what I'm talking about. These, that's Site 1 and 2, I think. It doesn't show up on this drawing, but that would appear to be enough space, if the soils and stuff were right, to put that drain field if, even though I, I think that, yielding to Tim, who's very knowledgeable at this, that putting these here would not have any influence on the lake, and with that heavy vegetation buffer probably wouldn't, wouldn't make any difference. But if we wanted to be technical about it, the question would be, what would be the opportunity to move that drain field to Site 1 and 2?
This is Tim speaking. For the layout of this, I would leave it right where it's at. A failure of that mound is not going to harm that lake. It's not going to.
Yeah, and it's already going to be treated.
Please.
It's, any failure that's blown out on the side would go towards the lower spot to the right. The state recommends 100 feet from recreational development lakes. Hubbard County exceeds it by going to 150, so we have the parameters of doing what we want to do in a variance situation. But if you go to any other county in the state, it would be 100-foot setback.
Okay.
If it's any other county, it's Hubbard County, and we all have...
We've closed public comment, please. Thank you. Thank you, Tim.
Yep.
Anybody else with questions?
This is Veronica speaking. I do have a question for the applicant. When you came up with the septic design and location and stuff, have you considered a different location other than that one?
We did look at other locations and the septic desire, did do soil tests throughout the property.
Anybody else?
This is Mike. If I'm reading this right, we're asking for 100 feet here, and the county has 150. If you move that, those two mounds towards Site 42, maybe at the cost of Site 42, would the soils meet the requirements there? And, and again, my calculations might be off, but we're talking, I think, moving it not that far, because the vast majority of the mounds are outside of the 150 feet.
Which one is... It would generate a new design.
What, where's 15, where's Site 42?
Immediately to the northwest of the mound furthest from the lake.
Oh, next to the one there?
Point to it.
There's area, the salt system is already just below that.
I understand that, but if that mound system was moved towards that site where it's running to the septic tanks, I don't think would be affected. We're looking at similar elevations. I'm not a septic designer. I'm just, one of the biggest concerns seems to be the, that's what the variance is for, is 100 versus 150 feet. I'm wondering, other than a new design, what, what prevents it from meeting the code?
Eric, will you have your cursor right now? Is that the site, is that the spot he's talking about?
Yes.
What, that's not a contention. That's not an issue at this point, is it?
No, I'm just saying you move those mounds towards, you shift all those mounds up towards that. If, that's the end of the drain, as I understand it, where it's coming down through that site to, to assume the septic tanks first and then to the mounds. Those mounds get pushed up, and, and does that meet the, does that then meet the 150 feet? Environmentally, I'm with you, Tim. I don't think it matters. I think the protections are there, but to meet the code, can that be done that way? That's my question.
Where I sit, I'm in favor of approving it where it's proposed.
This is Veronica speaking.
And I can go through my findings if you'd like.
Oh, we'll get to that real soon here, Tim.
And this is Veronica. I have a comment or a question, maybe, that you can assist with, addressing some of the public comment that we had on the septic and the usage. In the future, not necessarily now, but if this goes forward in any situation, in the future, if a CUP is brought to us, could there be a condition placed on the CUP for monitoring the septic that everyone is concerned with to do to accurately measure the usage?
It's in the design.
So it's already in the design?
It's already built into the design, the flows.
Perfect. Okay, that's great. That just helps out.
Okay, anybody ready to make a motion? First of all, Eric, we'd be making a motion on Part I and II separately, correct? Is that the proper way to handle this?
Depends. It's the board's prerogative. You could entertain and make a motion on both parts together if they're both proposed to be acted on the same way. The only reason you would act on them separately would be if you were entertaining motions to approve one and deny the other.
Okay.
Or table one and take an approval or denial action with the other.
Okay, thank you. Anybody ready to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Tim?
I'll make a motion to approve Part I and Part II. And I'll adopt the staff's findings for Part I. And for Part II, is the variance in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the official controls? I say yes, based on the topography elevations, the natural vegetation. Any failure of that system is not going to run to that lake. Number two, is the property owner proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner, not permitted by an official control? I'd say using the area proposed at the 100-foot setback is reasonable, considering he's leaving all the natural vegetation between there and the lake. Number three is a need for a variance due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the current owner or prior owner. The development and design that we had up there, the elevations are set up for that to naturally drain one way and drain the other way. And it's naturally set up the way you did the pinwheel. The water supply is the correct way to do it. That's a good design. So I say that, yes, for that, and I adopt the staff's findings for 4 and 5.
Okay, we have a motion by Tim. I'm going to second Tim's motion. And he's made a motion to approve Part I and II. He's accepted staff findings on Part I, and given his answers on Part II for questions 1 through 3, and accepted staff for 4 and 5. And my second, Mark, is the second, so we'll take a vote on it. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy. I'll vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
This is Mike. I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
This is Veronica. I vote aye.
This is Mark. I vote aye. Your application has been approved. Thank you. Get a letter from ESO.
You heard your chair.
Yeah.
Panic, but they don't understand it.
Yeah, it would have really been a hot seat.
I can't answer these questions.
I don't know. Me too.
I mean, I trust it'll be up to the county board.
Right.
Couldn't you build it here?
It was right.
Yeah, you could. But putting it far the best for a good septic system, the real issue is, this is far too big a gamble. If you've ever been on the west end of that lake, it's one or two feet deep. And you start tearing head out of little boats, and Holly Road going to it. Have you ever been up that? So, so, I have much different, I have much different attitude when it comes to that.
Okay. We have anything miscellaneous to cover here, Eric?
Miscellaneous item would just be an update for the commission that the Shoreland Management Ordinance proposed amendment concerning the professional services business category is slated for a public hearing with the county board on Tuesday, September 5. So that is progressing forward to a public hearing. And otherwise, the only other thing I would have would be in regard to the September meeting agenda. It is looking as though it will be significantly smaller in size than what we had this evening, so something to look forward to.
Yeah. This is Veronica. I have something to add for the miscellaneous. On the Steve Thompson variance application, 25B 23, even though we made the motion to approve it with a typo error at the 51 foot 8 inch, we just need to correct one of the findings of fact with that same number.
If nothing else, anybody ready to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Ken made a motion. Mark will second. Mike seconds it. Timothy, how do you vote?
I'll vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
Mark, I vote aye. Meeting is adjourned.